Good morning, everyone. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is November 15, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. We will start with a salute to the flag. And if Ms. Marie Rodriguez can please lead us, our newest library board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now do the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair. Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia, via phone.
Here.
Commissioner Andreola.
Present.
Acting County Manager Dave Solero.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll now move into item three. Mr. Solero.
Item number three is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. And I do not have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. I will start off and then move on down the line. I want to thank everyone for being here today. And we are about to do something that is very important to our representative democracy by certifying the vote. And we cannot wait to hear from you. I do want to say that I would like for folks to please be respectful of your neighbors who are in these chambers. Please be respectful of this board. I'm asking for no personal attacks, no profanities. And we are going to be taking security very seriously today, so please offer us your comments that I know will be passionate, but in a very civil manner, because today is all about conducting the business of the canvas. So that is what I ask from you. We are all ladies and gentlemen, and we need to treat each other as such. I will now move to Vice Chair Herman. Thank you very much. Commissioner Andreola. And Commissioner Clark. Okay. Now we'll move into item four, which is our public comment. Mr. Solero.
Madam Chair, public comment is item number four. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole. A speaker's viewpoints will not be restricted, however reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washto County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person to be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive comments may, excuse me, may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of public meetings are criminal acts as defined under Nevada Revised Statutes 203.090 and/or Nevada Revised Statute 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
We have several people signed in, so as I call the second name, please queue yourself up and be ready to speak. First up, we have Robbie Williams, followed by Mary Richardson.
Hello, my name is Robbie Williams, and I would like my comments to be included in the record. We have been told that the registrar of voters department wants to gain back our trust. I'm sorry to say, at least for me, you have failed again. As a concerned citizen, I have spent many days and many hours observing, both in the observation booth and also the lobby of the ROV office. I have just three minutes, so I will talk fast. We've had five different, mostly interim ROVs, with six changes in just four years. We have a county manager that possibly had something to do with the last one suddenly leaving with several official reasons why she left. We have a county manager who has disappeared because he scheduled medical procedures during this election. I've witnessed the slow walking of ballots. The scanners were used very sporadically, the days I observed, which were many, including Election Day, when counties stopped very, very early, even though they did not turn the lights off until almost 3:00 a.m. I saw thousands of ballots and bins on shelves and little scanning being done on any days I was there. I kept track by time and number of machines in use. We have anything but meaningful observation. Cameras are not even on the intake doors from the garage. Many of the staff chose sitting under cameras rather than at the end of the table. We could see. Staff badges were difficult to see, and at least 85% of the workers declared they were of the nonpartisan or no political party, party making it difficult to know if there was an actual balance in political ideologies, where two-party teams were mandated by law to work together. On October 23rd, I have viewed hands moving with ballots in them in the cage behind a fence. I wrote out a question form asking what was being done there and was told someone would get back to me. The very next day, stacks of boxes and a large, tall shelving unit had been moved against the fence to make sure what was happening back there was, once very visible, was completely covered up. A scanner used for the county early mail-in ballots was moved to the unsecured warehouse on Rock Boulevard without camera monitoring, and the garage doors were photographed wide open with people coming and going. A bin of thumb drives with data on them was found under a stack of empty boxes in the tabulation room on the day the guys were bringing in the thumb drives from the polling places. The senior staff used laptops with Wi-Fi in the ballot processing room and cage, and we were told by Andrew that they do take their county computers home at night. We have a corrupt media that protects you and uses carefully crafted reporting to do this. Was this election more transparent than the last two? No. You failed at being transparent. Thank you.
Mary Richardson, followed by Lindsay Harmon.
My name's Mary Richardson. Thank you for giving us the time. I will make this short and sweet. I support having the election, the canvas, accepted. I've been working elections in Washto County since 2016. I come from a banking background where dual custody and keeping people's funds safe is, you know, a top priority. And in my observation and working with the Washto County Registrar of Voters, the same type of care is given to dual custody, only here. The dual custody is between two parties. And the nonpartisan is really useful, because that way, that way you have a second party and can proceed. And the elections are run with integrity, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lindsay Harmon, followed by Nixie Sosa.
Thank you. I'd like to start my testimony today by reading an abbreviated text by the RNC's Chairwoman, Segal Shada. There is unfounded hysteria about the Nevada Senate race and legislative races. Nobody is stealing the U.S. Senate race when the GOP has gained control of the Senate and produced a trifecta. Nat-Nevada voters have previously demonstrated an affinity to split the ticket in past cycles. I will not be entertaining meritless conspiracy theories. While this tweet is surprising, it feels very timely considering the results of the presidential race in the state of Nevada. And while I would love if you decided today to give into the conspiracy theories you have preached, which would make Donald Trump reign holy terror on this county in an effort to clean up the mess he himself created, I actually believe in democracy. It's almost as if you knew the whole time you were lying to the constituents, to the community, all the while wasting taxpayer dollars with this stuff and fueling hate among residents. Shame on you to the commissioners who have previously voted against certifying this election in the past. You have handed over the sanity of this county to a crypto-bro snake oil salesman from of all states, California. You are cheaters, liars, grifters, and have zero business behind the desk. As a side note, when you posed for a photo with the New York Times proclaiming for the whole country, "I'm an election denialist," you aren't a right-wing hero. They used you. They're laughing at you. We are all laughing at you. Thank you.
Nixie Sosa, followed by Tyson Owens.
I just want to say I'm very grateful to be here today. I just want to say my experience personally going into vote, I came here at the Washto Register. Everyone was very kind. I was not influenced by anybody, and I felt like everyone remained nonpartisan. It's very unfortunate that everyone did not have that experience, but yes, I would just limit myself to that.
Thank you.
Tyson Owens, followed by Joe Montalongo.
This is my first time doing this, so sorry if I stutter. I want to speak in favor of you guys certifying this election. I believe it is your job to do this. You need to do this. And I want to speak about my experience doing election protection. I actually came here to this complex a couple of times to watch voters' votes. I have never experienced more transparent polling location ever. Anytime there was an issue, whether I even knew about the issue, I was always explained what was going on, how it was being fixed, when it was fixed. So all these conspiracies about what is not going on or what is going on, it's insane. And so I just want to speak that this is your, as is your job. This is why you're elected, to certify this election, and you need to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Montalongo, followed by Ruby Marin.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Joe Montalongo, Northern Nevada Organizer at Indigenous Voices of Nevada. I stand here today alongside my neighbors to address something that should be clear and straightforward: certifying our election results. Certification isn't about picking sides or deciding winners and losers. It's simply the final step in a process that has worked for decades to reflect the will of the people. I understand that there's been a lot of discussion surrounding this, but I trust that you, as responsible leaders, will do what is right. Certifying these results ensures that every vote cast by our community is honored and that we move forward with confidence and stability. Failing to do so opens the door to confusion and chaos, something none of us want for Washto County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ruby Marin, followed by Stephanie Cruz.
My name is Ruby Marin. Estoy aquí para solicitar al condado, al comisionado del condado, a certificar el recuento de votos del condado de Washto, Distrito 4, y de la junta escolar. Los candidatos solicitaron el recuento de votos, se hicieron los recuentos, y se confirmaron los resultados iniciales. Los comisionados del condado están legalmente obligados a certificar los resultados y completar el proceso electoral. La certificación de los resultados electorales no es discrecional, es obligatoria, y la negativa a hacerlo siempre intencionalmente semillas de duda en nuestro sistema electoral. La comisión del condado debe reconocer las decisiones de los votantes. Debido a la dedicación del registrador de votantes, los directores y los trabajadores electorales, la democracia prevaleció en las elecciones primarias donde se protegió al derecho de todos a votar. Los insto a que certifiquen esta reelección, esta elección. Hi, my name is Ruby Marin, and I'm here to ask the county commission to certify the Washto County District 4 and School Board recounts. Candidates request recounts of their races. The recounts were diligently conducted and the initial results were confirmed. As such, the county commissions are legally required to certify results and complete the election process. Certifying election resources not discretionary. It is mandatory, and the refusal to do so intentionally shows needs of those in our election system. The county commission must recognize the decision of the voters. Because of the dedication of the registrar of voters, staff, and poll workers, democracy prevailed and the primary election, where everyone's right to vote was protected. We ask you to certify this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Cruz, followed by Ryan Vortich.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Cruz, and I am here to advocate for, essentially to have you guys pass on our votes. I, myself, just like many people behind me, were in doubt that this was something that was able to be done bipartisan. Like, I too thought that the results were going to favor one way or the other. I didn't think that it would be possible for it to be bipartisan. So I took on the task of working several election protection shifts, and I am glad to say that I was proved wrong. I saw poll workers who, I didn't know any poll workers, what way they were leaning, and I think that our poll workers did an amazing job this election season. I think that it is your jobs as constituents to do what the people are asking for, and I think failure to do so would rely on us, the community, to look for replacements for your seats. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Vortich, followed by Jennifer Willet.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ryan Vortich, and I'm the Northern Nevada Democracy Coordinator with Silver State Voices. We are a nonpartisan organization whose work centers around strengthening our democracy by uplifting the voices, access, and power of historically underrepresented communities. I'm here to kindly remind you of your ministerial duty to certify the results of the November 5th election. Firstly, I would like to thank our election workers for the excellent job they did running a smooth presidential election this year despite various hurdles. Thank you to Deputy Andrew McDonald and to George Guthrie, to all of the ROV employees smoothly running our ballot counting center, to the poll workers who dedicated countless hours at polling locations across the county, and to every other player who made this election cycle such a success. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. During the election season, my organization runs an election protection program, which coordinates nonpartisan volunteers to observe at polling locations across Nevada. Locally, we had over 90 volunteers across county polls throughout the duration of early vote and Election Day, who witnessed firsthand the legitimate process of our elections. We maintained consistent communication with the ROV throughout our program, who are responsive to any questions or concerns we had, and who were dedicated to ensuring every eligible Nevadan had a safe, accessible experience casting their ballot. Additionally, we were present at the vote count centers, and we watched as ROV employees efficiently and effectively ensured every ballot was counted. As county commissioners, you all took an oath to fulfill your legal democratic duty to certify elections in Washto County. Your constituents rely on you to validate that their vote counts, and any decision to not certify is an intentional, targeted attempt to sow distrust into the hearts of voters. I urge you not to delay the democratic process and to avoid invoking conspiratorial doubt about the hard, transparent work that the ROV accomplishes each election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Willet, followed by Hannah Branch.
My name is Jennifer Willet, and I'm the Senior Campaign Manager at All Voting as Local Action Nevada, an organization that advocates for policies and legislative priorities that expand voter access. I'm here, like I am after every election, to support the certification. I'd like to start by sincerely thanking all election workers for their hard work to implement new laws, ensure all eligible voters could vote, and ensure all votes were counted. I live in Washto County, and throughout the election, I have volunteered as an election protection poll monitor and vote count observer. As a voter myself, I not only participated in the election, but I saw how effectively it was run. The system worked here. Over 200,000 voters made their voices heard, with over 50% voting by mail. Voters made their voices heard, and we must accept the results. It's now the responsibility of the county commissioners to certify the results and complete the election process. Certifying elections is a mandatory democratic duty. County commissioners don't get to override the will of the people by refusing to certify. To do so is fundamentally undemocratic and un-American. Thank you to the dedication of the registrar of voters staff and election workers, and democracy prevailed in the 2024 election, where everyone's right to vote was protected. I urge you to certify this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Branch, followed by Olivia Noe.
My name is Hannah Branch, and I'm a community organizer with ACLU of Nevada. I help oversee our nonpartisan election protection program. I want to start by thanking the clerks and poll workers for their hard work this election season to ensure that Nevadan voters could make their voices heard. During early voting, Election Day, and the ballot processing period, the ACLU of Nevada and our partner organizations had observers at vote centers across Washto County, as well as Nevada's other 16 counties, and effectuated the state's largest observer program. We're grateful to all who served as observers this election. As you're aware, the duty to certify this election is not discretionary, nor is the timeline for certification. We urge you to fulfill your mandatory requirement under law and certify this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Olivia Noe, followed by Kat Wilson.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Olivia Noe, and I am the Senior Community Organizer at OneAPI in Nevada, a grassroots nonprofit advocating for the interests of the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, which are the fastest-growing electorate group in the nation. I'm here to eagerly encourage this commission to certify the general election contests in Washto County. Throughout this election cycle, I have crossed paths with poll workers, election protection poll monitors, and registrar of voters staff that have done their due diligence to help citizens exercise their right to vote. I spent this past week and a half with volunteers who knocked on doors and called voters to assist them through the ballot hearing process. I'm proud that I got the chance to vote in person myself at the Northwest Reno Library. I've learned that, politics aside, voters have stuck with this electoral process because they believe in their fundamental democratic right for their voices to be heard. It is no doubt that our voting diaspora in Washto is very diverse and should be respected as such. Democracy is a team sport, and voters have decided the game. Now we are at the last step. I urge you all to perform this mandatory duty of certification and affirm that the election cycle is complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kat Wilson, followed by Pam Dar.
What a bunch of wonderful-spirited people here today. This is really wonderful. I've never come before, so I just, my urge was for you to not certify the election, but I don't want to be undemocratic or conspiratorial. I just want you to know that there's 17 boxes next door of postcards from that campaign from two weeks before the election, where people are changing their signatures. My son is one of them. I carried his in myself before the election, about a week before. And on Tuesday, I decided, well, let's see if all of our votes counted. His did not. It went into one of the 17 boxes next door, and it doesn't match, and they had a deadline that none of us really knew about, and that was Tuesday, by the end of the Business Day, that they needed to call, even though they did postcards. They had to call and cure their signatures. And that's the part that really kind of upsets me, is that that was not on the news for three days, like the postcards were on the news for three days. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I just think I would like to see those 17 boxes, I understand it's many thousands of postcards, be addressed before we certify the election, so that all the votes will count. That's what I would like to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Dar, followed by Drew Rebar.
Good morning, Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Pam Dar, and I'd like to have my comments put on the record. It's also been shared, part of this, with legislative meeting this morning, because I found it concerning, but that's the second item I'll address. The first one, I'd like to tell you about my mail-in ballot. The Friday before Columbus Day, my husband and my ballot got scanned to be delivered that day. It never showed up. His did, mine didn't. Saturday arrived, no mail-in ballot. Monday was a holiday. Tuesday, no ballot, no mail. Wednesday, we got a sample ballot in the morning. We never get morning mail. Just a sample ballot. No regular mail that I was supposed to get. So two days missing regular mail. In the afternoon, nope, actually, yeah, the afternoon, my sample ballot showed up on Wednesday. Thursday, no mail. Friday, all my mail showed up. So I think the post office had trouble getting the ballots out. Mine went on vacation for half a week. I don't know where it went. It was concerning, because it's a live ballot. So that bothered me. And the mail, my regular mail didn't get to me for days and days and days. So there is a thing that should be addressed that shouldn't be happening, and I don't know if you even knew about that happening. Another thing, real quick, I think we got swatted at the polling location I worked. Sheriff showed up, saying there was an incident, and I was not aware of one, but swatting a polling location is dangerous. The third one is observers. Most of them were great, but we had a few, and one was from the election protection group that I was told, they told me, "I don't ask." She went behind the counter of the intakes to take material off the desk behind the intake. She also started interacting with the voters in line. I had to leave my break, my one break in two days, because we were that busy, to ask her what she was doing and why. And she said she was helping. I go, "Who taught you this? You're not supposed to be in line. You sign papers to stay in your area." And she said, "Oh, no one taught me. I thought I would just help." I said, "Well, you can fill out an application at the ROV, but you're confusing the voters. You're wearing badges, you're wearing buttons. They think you're a poll worker, and we have a person that works the line." There was a few incidences like that, and maybe I should shoot an email, but it's very concerning. We dealt with 500 to 700 people a day. That took away from us to do our job. She apologized when she was in the line, then she found me on the floor and kept apologizing again. I had a job to do. So I don't know who taught her that. That's nothing I ever heard of being an observer, but that happened quite a bit, and we were a busy location. You know, we needed breaks. So when you're being interrupted by behavior like that, that's concerning. My last one is the fuel reduction. I just got an association thing for 250 bucks. No, and I guess the county's making it mandatory? Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Brianna Ferretowski.
My name is Drew Rebar. Please maintain my comments on the record. Mr. Edwards said something during the primary canvassing, and that was "vote your conscience." That was your legal advice. So I'm just here to give you some information, not really tell you which way to vote. Vote your conscience, that's what I would say. To canvass means to scrutinize, scrutinize the election. And Commissioner Clark, I got to give you credit. You were around a lot. You were scrutinizing the election. Just so you know what I did, I was out every day filming, recording. I went to the polling places on November 5th in Carson City, went in Washto, just recorded, watched people. Everything went very well, I thought. All of the election workers were very kind, very professional. It was great. I can't give enough credit to George and Andrew McDonald for trying to make themselves available. They did a great job. There is a warehouse at 250 South Rock Street, though. I did get a man that was an election worker that told me he drove ballots from 250 South Rock to hear what happened with those ballots. He's on my video. I also had multiple people call me and tell me that they worked for the county and they didn't want to get in trouble, so they didn't want to identify anything, but there were some county workers that were reaching out to people, so there's just some questions there. So I just urge you to ask yourself the questions. The other thing that you need to be aware of, everybody's aware of, I think you guys are aware of, my political bias. I did run for Republican Assembly District 40 in the primary election, and the Nevada Supreme Court ruled that the county violated the Constitution, they violated the law by screwing up the sample ballots. So we do know that county workers are fallible, because the Supreme Court said so. So I would just urge you to question what happened with those ballots? Why were they transported from 250 South Rock? Why'd that happen? I don't know. I just know that I've got people that told me they say it, and they want it in my video. Now, what else is there really? Oh, Ms. Amy Powell. We had a Washto County Election Board Certification Member, Amy Powell, and she was out there pulling up, well, your competitor signs, Ms. Hill, and congratulations on your win. It was, being a candidate is a stressful thing. But we do need to, we do need to question, why are these inconsistencies, hiccups, burps, belches? belches, whatever the hell you want to call them? Why do we have so many problems with running an election? Thank you, Drew Rebar. Have a good day.
Brianna Farotowski, followed by Brian McMahon.
I observed the following issues during this 2024 general election. On Election Day, as tabulation was occurring in the tabulation room, I requested that the Deputy Registrar allow observers to view boxes and materials on the floor behind a pillar. He discovered 155 USB thumb drives believed to be used during previous elections among the materials on the floor. He counted the USBs in view of the livestream camera in the ballot storage cage and stored them in a sealed tote in the cage. On October 17th, while in the ballot processing observation room, I counted 11 ballot scanners, and on November 4th, I counted 10. When I inquired about this, it was explained to me that the missing scanner was at the warehouse and would be used as a backup scanner. The Deputy Registrar explained to me yesterday that the scanners moved back to the ROV office and would be used during the post-certification. A fellow observer who first noticed the scanner was missing has a photo of this scanner on the processing floor on October 20th during early voting. If this was removed during the election, did Washoe County violate NRS 293750, which protects against removal of election equipment? I saw several laptops used in the processing center during this election, including one containing a signature used by the media production specialist. He explained that he has access to the Total Vote system, which includes voter information and signature information on his laptop. I viewed many instances of employees working on their laptops in the processing room with ballot envelopes. The media production specialist stated it was permissible to take the laptop home with him. He verified that up to 19 ROV employees have laptops that contain voter information that could travel to personal residences and away from county property. Would this be another Washoe County violation of NRS 293750? Total Vote is also used on the signature verification workstations in the ballot processing room. On November 12th, I observed an employee on a signature verification station with a signature on their Total Vote screen along with a line of bookmark tabs that read Assessor, Inside Washoe, Login, Secretario, Bookings, E-Pulse, Q Alert, and Aurora Falls Office. When I inquired about this, it was explained to me the employees could access their county account at that signature verification station on the ballot processing floor. I have a concern that having access to their personal county account and login on the signature verification workstations while verifying the signatures in the Total Vote system and removing laptops used to process mail ballots and signatures off the processing floor has compromised the security of the election. I believe these concerns warrant a complete review of signature verification on all mail-in ballot envelopes and a hand recount of all ballots to ensure the results of this election were secure and accurate before the vote is canvassed today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian McMahon, followed by Lilly Amador. And there are documents that Mr. McMahon would like distributed.
My name is Brian McMahon. I live here in Reno. My comments are for the record. I worked at the Department of Defense for 34 years. My last role was as Chief Engineer for a secure computing facility. Under my watch, we modified the building, installed the equipment, and established the operating procedures necessary for certification. I am familiar with the requirements for a secure computing facility, and the Washoe County ROV facility does not meet those requirements. Physical security requirements amount to walls, doors, and locks beyond normal standard commercial use. Interior walls and doors have the same requirements as external, unless the entire building is operated at the same level of security as the processing center. This does not exist at the Washoe facility, since the main entry door is a standard internal door, which is propped open during operation. Electronic security has to do with emission controls built into the facility to prevent signals from coming in and out during operation. I don't believe any of that exists in this facility, since I have observed county employees on cell phones in the facility. I observed a guy on a laptop hooked to internet in the facility, so there is no signals protection. More important than either of those, however, is the procedures under which the people operate. The critical element here is that no electronic devices should ever come into or out of this computer, computing facility. Most employees drop their cell phones near the doors they come in, however, they're already in the room when they do that. I saw no procedures for any of the numerous visitors, supervisors, specialists, news media, law enforcement coming in and out to remove their electronic devices prior to entry. Nobody thinks the sheriff is a threat, but that phone in his pocket is, because it can be co-opted by third parties. The ROV has stated that the tabulators are the most important element, and they are in a separate room. That room is adjacent to the main processing center, separated only by a standard wall and door, and provides no additional security. Flash drives go in there, the votes are tabulated, the results are sent to the state. If they're sent to the state from the tabulators, the tabulators are connected to an external network and they're not isolated. Meanwhile, paper ballots are scanned in the main processing room. The ROV states that the scanners do not count votes. If that's the case, then the information from the scanners has to get to the tabulators. They're now connected, and any vulnerability in the room with the scanners, cell phones, laptops, et cetera, is also a vulnerability for the tabulators, since they are connected and data is flowing between them. The ROV facility does not meet standard government requirements for a secure processing facility.
Thank you.
Lilly Amador, followed by Ed Powell.
My name is Lilly Amador. Estoy aquí solo para resaltar la importancia del voto en nuestra comunidad latina y en todo el país. Mis amigos y conocidos, con mis amigos y conocidos, he promovido el creer en nuestras instituciones y ejercer el voto con la certeza de que el mismo será respetado. Que entiendan que debemos votar por los que no pueden votar. He buscado a jóvenes nuevos votantes y así generar cultura del voto en las nuevas generaciones. Personalmente creo ampliamente en el voto. Hi, my name is Lilly Amador. I'm here to highlight the importance of voting in our community and the role at the country between friends and people that I know. I have been promoting that I believe in the institution and certainly that at vote it will be respect. I have been promoting the importance to vote with the young people and change the new generations. Personally, I did vote early. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Powell, followed by Bruce Parks.
I'm here to support the board on a successful certification of the vote today. Good luck. I'd like to thank the many people involved in an election, and particularly the Registrar's office in what has been a hostile environment. The people that have chosen to sow chaos, distress, and hostility are not good neighbors and not good citizens. I'm wishing us all a successful portion of this process. Thank you.
Bruce Parks, followed by Charles Elliott.
Bruce Parks, for the record, Chairman of the Washoe County Republican Party. I have a lot of questions, but first, I'd like everybody to understand that some of the problems with our election, you can't see simply by observing, even if you're there in person. There's things going on behind the scenes that you're not aware of. For instance, the VRAM system that was implemented by the Secretary of State prior to having all the kinks worked out. That system kicked out people that had been registered and voting in Nevada elections for 30 years. When they showed up to cast their ballot, they were told, "They're not registered to vote." They had to submit a provisional ballot. In Washoe County alone, there were over 6,000 provisional ballots. Well, that couldn't possibly sway an election either way. Now, could it? We have people that receive multiple ballots at their house. That was a situation that our Secretary of State guaranteed us could not happen. So, how did it happen? How did people get multiple ballots at their house in their name? Questions. These are not questions that I want you to answer to me. I want you to answer them to yourself. Nevada's the laughing stock of the United States, because we cannot count ballots in a timely manner. And that's a condition that is horrible to me. And it all stems from, the majority of it, our Secretary of State's office. I want to thank our Voter Registars Office for their hard work, especially in light of all the challenges that they've faced lately. And the volunteers. Folks, until we restore the confidence that your vote counts, we're going to continue to have problems. We, the people, demand, and once you certify this vote, because there's little doubt in my military mind that that's exactly what you're going to do, that our voter rolls get cleaned. We have people on our voter rolls that haven't lived in Nevada for 10 years, and they're still on our voter rolls. Ridiculous. Thank you.
Charles Elliott, followed by Barbara Van Marren.
Charles Elliott, I would like my comments to be put into the record. Here we are again. Isn't this exciting? With the same, same thing, same questions, same observations, different people, and in fact, even worse this time. But I'm here from the organization, and we are a community-organized group of the EFFST, and we are upset. And that, by the way, is the Elliott Family for Sanity and Truth Organization. I met in May the Register of Voters, Carrie Ann Burgess. I was so encouraged. We were with some Christian leaders that were going to set up some voting stuff and all of that good, we were excited. She seemed to me very, very capable, okay? And we were looking to her and communicating and everything, and then all of a sudden, "Oh, she, she's sick. She's got to leave." Oh. But we find out later, "No, no, no. She was told to leave." But, but out of the last five elections, and the, or after the last four elections, five ROV leaders, who is the common denominator? Our county manager, who happens to be sick right now, seen in a bar later, but, we have a new mandate, folks, in this country. Thank God President Trump, future President Trump, if he makes it, is going to change things. How he's going to change Nevada, I don't know, but I am going to be here. And we are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic. You work for us. We don't work for you. Now, until this room is full of folks of sanity and truth, you guys are still going to do the same thing. You guys just listen to a bunch of stuff, and you're going to probably get threatened by certain people in our government to go ahead and certify the vote or whatever. But, the biggest problem we have is honesty. And how you guys and how this county leadership from top to bottom, council to council, can function lying and illegal stuff, I just, I can't sleep at night, and that's probably why I'm not running for office.
Barbara Van Marren, followed by Janet Butcher.
Thank you for the opportunity to address all of you. I voted early, thinking this is a great opportunity. I had to go out of town, and I was going to be back in time for the election, but I wanted to submit a paper ballot to make sure that if something happened, they'd have my vote on paper. I went up to the Rob Drive Library, submitted my paper ballot, and they said, "We're going to put it in this box. Here, at the end of the day, a Republican and Democrat are going to come pick up the ballots and turn them into the Registrar of Voters." I thought, "Sounds good." Every day since then, I've checked to make sure that my vote was going to be counted as of this morning. It still hasn't been counted. So, how can you possibly certify this election if my vote hasn't been counted yet? On here, it says, "You're going to represent a true vote cast, no later than 10 days," and I've been told 10 to 15 days after the election. I've talked to a bunch of friends and neighbors. They've, they're telling me the same thing. Their votes, they've checked the website, their vote still hasn't been checked yet, or hasn't been certified or submitted yet. Somebody, am I wrong? Please explain to me. In addition to all the other things, items that have been brought up, I don't know how you could possibly certify this vote today. I moved over here three and a half years ago from a state that I will not mention, because I don't want everybody blasting me for it. But, every time I voted over there, I was confident that my vote was, was registered and counted. Over here, on the Election Day, I saw all these other states' votes counted and shown up on the screen, and there's Nevada, and there's Arizona. "Oh, we haven't got your votes yet." You know, the next day, "We still haven't got your votes yet." And I'm going, "What's the matter with, with Nevada? This is embarrassing. I love this state. I've totally moved over here. I think it's the most beautiful state. Every night, I watch the sunset, and I think, 'What a gorgeous state. I just love it here.' I don't miss my old state, especially these days." So, I urge you, please do not certify this election until you find my ballot and count me amongst all the other ballots that were counted. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Cheryl Perino.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments, verbatim, if you would, please. I do have to say, I don't know what happened to my notes. Oh, here they are. I really hadn't prepared anything, but I am here today to be involved in our constitutional republic. I do notice that all of those requesting to rubber stamp the canvassing only speak to democracy. There is a difference, and I hope that people will educate themselves. The process, the process still has issues. There are problems, even after three of the Commissioners okayed to have over $400,000 being allocated to outside sources being brought into our local elections. And there probably is even more money, because they increased the manager's ability to spend $300,000 without coming before the board. You can look up which Commissioners are behind that. I did notice that there were long lines at Election Day. Several people stopped by where I was outside here, outside this building, and said they had to leave to go pick up their kids. There were not adequate people working the lines and getting people through. There was also not an ADA line. I helped a couple people get to the front of the line, because they were either with walkers or canes or what have you. They were totally ignored when they came into the building. As the one lady said before, "I looked again this morning. My ballot is received. My husband's ballot is received, not counted." Why? I checked back on previous years, and if, if we did that, it was, it was done right away. Why? Why isn't it counted? Did my vote count? It's not count, it's not stating it's counted. This is from the 5th to the 15th. And as I stated before, you guys, before, the VRAM system was a And as I stated before, you guys, before, the VRAM system was originally scheduled for a 2026 implementation, and it was rammed in for 2024 presidential election. That doesn't look good. I hope that you postpone the canvassing of rubber stamping this election. There's problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Perino, followed by Cynthia Perrine.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Perino. Please put me on record. My previous experience was as an auditor, CPA for an international CPA firm. And I can tell you by the comments made today and my observations and reading, there is no way an independent CPA firm would certify this election. These issues need to be resolved. I'm becoming, spending most of my time now on trying to regain our freedom in this country in Washoe County, for my children and my grandchildren to be. I think you've got owed to yourself to have integrity and realize there are serious breaches of security that need to be addressed. Votes need to be counted. When I was a poll watcher of this election several times, I was shocked that provisional ballots were being counted. There were several first-time people that came in with undocumented IDs, and the poll manager would make a phone call, then would allow them to register and vote. I said, how can that be? If you go to the driver's license bureau, if you don't have documentation, they don't give you a driver's license. They send you away till you get it. So I'd like to know how and who is curing those provisional ballots. Also, the Gateway Pundit showed deletion of votes, November 7th to November 8th. Clark Cloney deleted 26,902 votes. Washoe, 549. How alone, just because of that deletion, has that been accounted for and resolved by an independent auditor? Signatures were not satisfactorily matched. Votes not counted? That, that is just ludicrous. Washoe County uses Dominion machines, which has proven hackable. We have severe security breaches that need to be resolved. Solution, I would say, paper ballots, one-day voting, maybe we could get a federal holiday for that day. And also, you have to prove citizenship, okay? So I recommend do not certify votes until my issues and other issues brought up today, which are serious security and audit breaches.
Thank you. Cynthia Perrine, followed by Carissa Snedeker.
My name is Cynthia Perrine. Please put my comments in the record. I will have to echo a lot of Cheryl Perino's comments. Numerous facts have been brought to light about weakness in internal controls regarding the security of the voting ROV areas. And these are significant concerns, as I too am a trained CPA with a very large CPA firm. And indeed, these internal controls, the failure of the internal controls are a serious concern. Also, the previous speaker talked about the deletion of votes. I'm rather astounded at the lack of curiosity and the lack of information on the part of this commission for not wanting to communicate to the public what has happened in these anomalies that have been pointed out, the deletion of votes. How can that happen? So this is my vote of no confidence for certification of this election based on common sense and reason. No certification today. Thank you.
Thank you. Carissa Snedeker, followed by Val White. And Ms. Snedeker has documents that will be distributed.
Hi, my name is Carissa Snedeker, and I'm Chair of the Democratic Party of Washoe County. As Chair of the party, I maintained regular contact with the registrar of voters' office throughout the election preseason, throughout the election season, pre-vote, early vote, post-election day. And my questions were answered clearly, and if I raised a concern regarding what I thought were discrepancies in the numbers reported by the Secretary of State versus the registrar, the registrar of voters' office was quick to dig into my concerns and take them seriously. This helped ease my mind, and as a consequence, I could take that information back to our voters who were expressing concern. Over time, I was able to understand how data was being pulled and reported and explain that to my voters. One of the biggest concerns and was raised by folks on the Republican side as well was that discrepancy in whether their ballot was being counted, whether it had been received and counted, especially those who dropped ballots in the drop boxes at the libraries and things like that. And what I understood and came to understand was, if it got dropped at the library or wherever, it was scanned that day, but for some reason was not showing up at the Secretary of State's website. And your numbers, your ballots were counted, they were scanned. And I don't know why, even maybe to this day, it's still not showing at the Secretary of State's website as having been counted, but it was counted. And honestly, our turnout numbers do show that. We have very high turnout vote here in Washoe County, 85% turnout, means your votes were counted. So I'm just going to leave it at that. But I had the same concerns from my Democratic voters who were coming to me, asking me the same questions. That's not written in here, but I'm just letting you know. With the new VRAM system going online for the first time, the new scanners and the staffing changes this office has seen over the past four years, it was clear that this election was going to be more challenging than previous ones. And while this election saw many challenges with regards to the timely reporting of voter activity, voter registration, and more, over time, I'm, I'm confident that the team at the registrar of voters overcame these challenges to provide the voters of Washoe County with a fair and accurate count of the votes cast in this election. And I urge the county commission to certify this election as it is your duty per the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Val White, followed by Maureen McElroy. And Ms. White has some documents to be distributed.
As a reminder to all members on this board, the First Amendment still stands. In a SCOTUS decision, the court asserted, "America has a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, at times even caustic." I add that board members may not limit my speech. No commissioner on this board, including the Chair, has the right or power to overrule my constitutional rights. I'm submitting an affidavit for an election violation, and I urge you to read it carefully. It's about a thumb drive that was taken from a computer connected to the Internet and directly inserted into the election management system computer. It's like using a dirty needle. That's what happened to our system. Starting on a positive note, employees were kind and courteous during a very stressful season, for the most part. There were a few exceptions. I know Andrew McDonald tried to be fully transparent, but there were a few accommodations that could have been easily made that weren't. I've heard from multiple previous speakers who never, who I never saw in the ROV. I was an observer in the registrar of voters' department and the ballot processing center for over 120 hours since October 19th. Here is a list of very concerning issues. I just told you about the dirty needle, the thumb drive being taken from an Internet-connected computer to one of the cybersecurity air gap network. A possible intrusion of digital code into this system should decertify the entire system, and it mandates that this board not certify this election. The scanners are part of the cybersecurity component tree. There was a scanner that was removed from the ballot processing center mid-election, during early voting. A voting scanning machine where ballots from who knows where could have been scanned, not observed by the public, not on camera, not guaranteed to be in a secure facility, hidden. No one knew about it until we recognized something was wrong. We saw 11 scanners in that room in the beginning, 10 after a few days. The McKinley Arts Center, the manager failed to remove the thumb drives from a voting kiosk and close the voting machine. He refused to retrieve the drives when he was notified of his error. McDonald and an election employee then went to retrieve the drives without any public observation. I don't know how the drives and the machine were secured after their return. The curing of ballot signatures by one employee at the initial viewing is not secure. Should you have an election employee? Boy, I have so much to say. It's dangerous for one person with party bias to approve or disprove a signature.
Thank you. Maureen McElroy, followed by Cliff Nellis.
My name is Maureen McElroy, for the record. I really appreciate your time. I know this is a stressful time, and so thank you for being here, and thank you for allowing us to speak, allowing me to speak. As a citizen of Washoe County, I urge you to please certify our election results. This ensures that our voters, our voices, the people of Washoe County are heard. I am so exhausted by the continuous swirl of conspiracy theories. I'm sure you're tired too. Please, please don't give in to the pressure of folks who seem to want to just sow discord. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cliff Nellis, followed by Carrie Stevens. And we do have documents to distribute for Mr. Nellis.
This is a letter to the Board of County Commissioners. We, the people, implore you not to declare a canvass of the results of the 2024 general election until a forensic audit of the results is done. So I'm, I'm not saying don't canvass, I'm saying do a forensic audit first. There are too many anomalies to canvass it now. The word canvass means to carefully scrutinize. Failure to do that could have serious legal consequences. August 20, 2024, we read a resolution for a legally valid 2024 election produced by the United Sovereign Americans. They, in, in, using the NVSOS data for the 2022 election, USA found violations of both federal and state laws, which we read to you at the time. They will be doing an examination of this election. If there are violations of this law, they will be prosecuting with lawsuits for the enforcement of federal law regarding elections and holding those accountable who participate in fraud. Post-election ballot dumps, flips for the Senate race. Large number of ballots came in after the election through the mail, they deraced Sam Brown's lead, and went to Jackie Rosen. Same thing happened with the presidential race between Trump and Harris. The same pattern appeared in 2022 that flipped eternal general and Secretary of State races. Potential ballot dump from a Democrat processing center. We have witnesses. Our lodge number of boxes brought into the vote center from the parking garage late Wednesday afternoon. We believe there's a possibility that those were legitimate ballots, illegitimate ballots processed in a warehouse that were received from some source, possibly the post office that were undeliverable or harvested illegally and made to appear and run through the processing center. Democrat operative certifying the election. We caught Amy Powell, pictured in the next page, stealing Marsha Burkligler's signs on October 31st, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. We found out she was on our county election certification board, and she is believed to be a friend of Chairman Alexis Hill's mother. And is an attorney from California, her car had California license plate. We're told she was registered in Washoe County, but her bar license is in California, and she has no bar license in Nevada, and we do not believe she has a legitimate Nevada address. Her relationship to Chairman Hill is a cause for great concern. Malfeasance by county manager Brown. Manager Brown fired registrar Carrie Ann Burgess because she was doing her job of purging ineligible voters. He, he wanted to retain them to assist the Democrat party fraud machine funded by Harris' $1 billion, many of his people over here funded by that. He lied to the BCC, saying she was taking a medical leave for stress. She told the Associated Press she was not under stress and wanted her job back. Mr. Brown refused. He then took a leave of absence under the guise of medical leave for one month so he could operate, oversee the fraud machine in absence of Ms. Powell. Much of the previous statements are based on circumstantial evidence.
But the point is, we need an investigation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, who's next up?
Carrie Stevens, followed by Julie Adams. It appears Ms. Stevens has some documents to distribute.
My name is Kelly Stevens. I'm a research analyst, and I've been doing my job for, I don't know, about a dozen years now. I've submitted reports to the FBI, the SEC, the Inspector General, so on and so forth. I think you get the idea. I specialize in reporting and uncovering public corruption. For a wonderful resource to learn more about this term, I suggest you go to www.fbi.gov. We all know that elections in 2020 was a problem, and I think it's comical that people hear talk about conspiracy theorists, especially because Hillary Clinton claimed election fraud in 2016. Then in 2022, same thing, same thing happened, dirty voter rolls, you guys just can't pull it together, or you won't pull it together. Your ROV office is a revolving door, you've spent tens of millions of taxpayer dollars on a broken and compromised system. And so here we are in 2024. Your former ROV, Carrie Ann Burgess, is on stage with David Becker in LA for an Arizona State University Expo one week before she steps down due to stress. An Eric Brown county manager is caught drinking in a bar after allegedly taking sick leave just before the election. The primary was a disaster, and you all certified it anyway. Despite the fraud you certified, with one of you showing your allegiance to Israel, not America, before you flipped your vote and betrayed your constituents and your country. You all, save one person, certified a primary that was sideways with a Democrat by the name of Amy Powell on the election certification board, who was just embarrassingly caught stealing signs. And she also had access to the EMS room during this election. Fast forward to today, you guys, along with promises of results that would be processed more quickly with a $30 million VRAM system, which glitched, by the way, and almost a $600,000 sorter, still processed ballots for, I don't know, almost 30 days? A slow roll of results and notable anomalies with multiple ballots missing and mailed to the same people, your malware and exploits documented in real time on your election software. Pay attention to this next part. I submitted multiple affidavits prior to November 12th outlining real-time security breaches in your systems for elections that you contracted with in Washoe County nationwide. Total vote, Dominion, all of it, Blue Crust. I think it's, I think it's notable that you all can sit here and claim elections are clean when employees programming the equipment and the voter kiosks and the poll pads came from a temp agency who contributed to Kamala Harris 2024. Yep. Yep. Not one of you ever went to observe the ballot processing once this year, and those of you who went to certify the primary willingly ignored reports of malfeasance from witnesses. Don't do it again.
Julie Adams, followed by Fred Meyer.
Julie Adams. Yeah, just looking at the slides.
Could you move the microphone towards yourself? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know it moved. Good morning, Julie Adams. I just looked on the Secretary of States, and it still shows, so 11:05, mail ballot received. So once again, two different slides showing two different things. And then, and then when we have a question about it, we're said we're to be bad neighbors because we have so many people with violations, people that have observed, people that have worked the polls and have seen all the stuff that's going on, and we have a question about it, and we would like for you guys to take the time to look at it. You know, we're just, you would think that everybody would want each and every vote counted properly. So a lot of curious things continue to go on in this election, violations filed, will they be investigated or ignored? And I agree with Carrie Ann Burgess, was she pushed out because she was doing her job? And thousands of votes deleted? There's a new one for us. Has there been any explanation for that? I haven't heard anything, but I might have missed it. Once again, the eyes of the nation are on Washoe County, pretty embarrassing. December 6th, a lawsuit regarding the 2020 election will be in front of December 6, the lawsuit regarding the 2020 election will be in front of the Supreme Court of the land. So that should be interesting. It will at least be looked at. May not be in front of the Supreme Court, but it is under consideration. This election, 2024, has been watched, and fraud will be revealed in due time. Pride comes before the fall. What is done in the darkness will be revealed by the light of truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Meyer, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Hello, my name is Fred Meyer. Please put me on the record. I am with everybody that is asking you to do a forensic audit before you canvass this vote. I can't believe some of the things I'm hearing. I know we have one champion in this group that's willing to entertain that for sure. We're looking for a couple more here, okay? There's a lot of people here who are very concerned, and this is just a small taste of, you know, the general public, as you all probably know. But I'm here to talk about the Library at WSC-1 extension of funds that they are now going to come to you all to ask to overturn, and this is very interesting. I'm asking you all to not disenfranchise the vote of the people in this last election regarding this item. They use the lame excuse that they can't read or understand English, and that's why, oh, the people didn't understand, so really, we need to do a do-over here. We, on the other hand, are here to certify our election and, on the other hand, overturn the vote on the WSC-1 library funds. Wow, that is really kind of crazy-making in my, in my head. The library has not listened to the public regarding, they've, well, the library entertained our children with drag queens, and they still supply dirty books to our kids, and we don't like it, and that's why those funds were voted down. Make no mistake, we made sure the public was aware that these things were going on, and the public went, whoa, stop, stop, drop, and roll. Don't give them any more money. These folks are not helping our children. They're hurting them. It was made very clear with that vote. It's a new day, and the sun shines a little brighter with the outcome of the election, folks. And we expect to see you all salute the outcome of this election and start to give us some of the things that we are asking for here. Thank you.
Victoria Meyer, followed by Deborah Jalen.
Victoria Meyer, please put my comments on the record, verbatim. Once again, in this election, we received ballots from tenants of mine that lived in my house before me when I owned it. They were my tenants. They moved out of state three years ago. I still got ballots from them. I got a paper ballot for the primary, but my husband and I didn't get one for the general. Huh. So I called the register of voters, and they told me that I opted out in '22. Well, then how come I got a paper ballot for the primary? Just a minor problem. And our votes still haven't been counted either, by the way. Let's see. 26,000 deleted ballots reported, according to Gateway Pundit. Should give you pause to investigate before certifying. Certifying means that you, as officials of our county, use your vote to make the declaration that you know these election results are true and accurate. Those are the key words, true and accurate accounting of all votes cast. Then there's that lady, Amy, stealing Marsha Burke Bigler's signs. Marsha, who ran against our Chair, Alexis Hill. Alexis Hill, whose mother is good friends with Amy? Hmm. So let me get this straight. You will certify an election as true and correct, a true and correct accounting of all votes? An election whose election certification committee contained three members, one of which was Amy? That very same Amy who stole Marsha Burke Bigler's signs, Alexis Hill's opponent. What else might Amy have stolen? Hmm. If you certify this election, it will go down as the biggest dog and pony show to date. I know there's one person that I completely respect on this board who's never voted to certify an election, and my hat is off to you, Jeanne Herman. Thank you.
Deborah Jalen, followed by Jessie Coulter.
Thank you. I want my comments read to put on the record, please. My name is Deborah Jalen, and I do not support the certification of this election. I support every one of the speakers today that do not support the 11-5-24 election on each of their points, so there's no point for me to go into all those. You've seen them, and I hope you've heard them, and I hope you've listened to them. I spent countless hours at this, observing this counting because it's one of the functions that I had not done at any election that I had been involved in. But I thought, I'd heard so many comments, I thought, I need to look at this myself. I need to see what's happening. And I tell you, I was shocked. I was absolutely shocked, and there's many things that I noticed that have already been brought up, that I made notes on. But one thing that was not brought up yet, and maybe because there was only a couple of us in there last night, is that the post-LAT people that were brought in, let me just get my notes here, they spent many hours looking at this. I respect that. And the first run failed. But before the failure was announced, staff left. They were obviously released for that evening. And when they cleared up the problem, two or three, I couldn't see exactly, two or three of those post-LAT certifiers were running the scanners. This is not right. And when I brought this up, they said, oh, yeah, they can do that. That's not right at all. Let's see. Anyway, I wanted to say, please, do the right thing. You folks were all voted. I know that one person was appointed by the governor. Do the right thing and do not certify this election. This is flawed. And please, I appreciate you listening to everyone and listening and do not certify in this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessie Coulter, followed by Joni Hammond.
Good morning, Commissioners, councilors. I'm not here to tell you whether to certify or not. I'm here as a first-time candidate that just went through this process and knew very little about our local government. In fact, I was embarrassed not to even know Commissioner Hill when I first met her at a function earlier this year. That's how naive I was. I'm a nonpartisan. I'm a trial lawyer who bases my decisions on any issue on evidence. I'm not some crazy conspiracist. I'm not a 2020 election denier. But I assumed after 2020, Washoe County would make sure this election would be damn near perfect. When I threw my hat in as a candidate, I was shocked about what I learned. The incompetency, the mistakes. As Commissioner Androla said in the primary, she's tired of the hiccups, the hiccups. So here are the facts that alarm me. Number one, back in the primary, Drew Rebar was left off the sample ballot. Now, some people don't think that's a big deal. To me, as a candidate, a first-time candidate, I thought about that. I would be heartbroken. That's what people sit down at a kitchen table and look at and talk with their friends and their family. That's not okay. My friend's dad, in this general election, got three official ballots in his name to his house. Friends of mine, who I know that live in the city of Sparks, didn't have my race on their ballot and couldn't vote for me. And people in apartments didn't get ballots because the system was treating them as businesses. Finally, the effective termination of Carrie Ann Burgess as a register of voters just weeks before the election alarmed me. What I've come to learn is that she was let go five days after she reported the, all these bugs and problems with the VREM system, the new system? This poor lady can't make any side happy. She pisses off one side during the primary, and now the other side gets rid of her. To me, that equals a woman doing her job. And then Eric Brown goes on hiatus through the end of November? You can't make this stuff up. So I was just a naive, local business lawyer, nonpartisan, but I am very concerned that these problems are going to disenfranchise future candidates that can do great stuff for this county.
Thank you.
Joni Hammond, followed by Sandy Tivett.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joni Hammond. I second everything Jessie Coulter said. It's interesting to me that the Left is eager to certify. My summary of what they're saying is hurry up, hurry up, certify, so we can forget about what went on in the election, then we can move on. In their words, you should be happy. Trump won. I am happy Trump won. Trump's going to make a lot of changes in our country with a Trump win. But I continue to be concerned about our county. You can call me anything you want. What am I concerned about? The county attorneys and others threatening Commissioners to certify? There is no choice, I heard the second time. If this is the case, why are we here today? Two, four registers in three years. Three, absent city manager. Four, USB drives big, being moved. Five, ballots coming in without a chain of custody. Six, unending days of counting ballots. Are we done yet? The expert on security today speaking to the lack of security throughout the election system. Why isn't anybody concerned about that? You listen as if it doesn't matter. It does matter to many of us. Those who bring up election problems are bullied. We're called election deniers, conspiracy theorists. We're laughed at, ridiculed, and called names. Names I can't say today because I'll get gavelled out. In your defense, it's easier not to look at the problems. It's easier to sit by and don't look at anything. That's what I see happening. You will not see election problems if you don't look for it. There's evidence there. There are problems. You could do an audit. There's proof. Look at it. Do not certify.
Thank you.
Sandy Tivett, followed by Debbie Hedgens.
That is my favorite post from my newly re-elected President Trump. And my favorite line out of that post? When I win, which he has, we all know that, those people that cheated will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. President Trump is a president that keeps his promises. Promises made, promises kept. He's coming for you all. So the cheating doesn't happen at the polling locations. That's very obvious. It's the mail-in ballots. You would have to be in a coma or dead not to know it. You slow walk the count, and you inject the fake ballots. President Trump won this county. How many ballot dumps did it take for Kamala to pull ahead all of a sudden? Because that's what happened. We all see it. The ROV has a great crew, absolutely. I was placed at UNR, probably one of the most leftist locations you can be at, right? I had a great crew, and I was the only Republican. We had some nonpartisans and a lot of Democrats. But we got along great. We ran it great. It was awesome. The poll pads, those are great, for the most part. Less paper, made it easier to do our jobs. So there really is no election violation I want to report. What I do want to report is some unethical behavior by the Nevada Secretary of State and our acting ROV. The second day of early voting, the campus had a UNR get-out-the-vote rally. Ten minutes before that, the rallygoers show up at our polling location, we had Andrew McDonald show up to give us a heads-up that Little John, the rapper, celebrity rapper, is marching with the rallygoers and with Nevada Secretary of State. They marched up into our polling location. They were shaking hands with the voters. Why would you bring a celebrity rapper who is associated with P. Diddy? That is called election interference and influencing. I recommend that this board take a recess right now. You go down to the ROV office. You have Andrew McDonald pull a sample of the signatures that the worker that was able to verify 36,000 signatures in 10 hours, pull a sample. Pull a sample right now. Do not certify. Or do, because he's coming for you.
Debbie Hedgens, followed by Susan Van Ness.
Debbie Hedgens, and I would be most happy for you to put my comments in the record. Our, our dissenting remarks about how the election was run is not about the outcome. It's about the process. Had that process been done cleanly and transparently, we would be happy to accept the results and for you to certify today. But with all the problems that we see, how can you? I was part of the ballot curing process. I talked to people who had submitted their postcard with their updated signature. That postcard was scanned and actually deleted their signature. They had no signature on file. This was more than one person. That caused their ballot to have to be cured. If they, if they, there were people who didn't even know about their uncured ballot or how to work the process and get it done. The, so how many of uncured ballots and provisional ballots did affect our outcome? Those voters are disenfranchised. They didn't get their vote counted. I'm begging you to prove us wrong. Prove us wrong. Do an audit. Show us that we're mistaken, that there weren't any errors, but do it clearly, transparently, so that with an unbiased audit, then we can go away quietly and leave you alone and hopefully have fair, clean elections in the future. This is ridiculous. We were the laughing stock of the country. I heard news pundits saying, what's up with Nevada? Why can't they get their votes counted? We're a very small state with only seven electors. And yet, states many times our size were getting theirs done by Election Day. Yeah, there's a problem there. So mail-in ballots without postmarks should alarm anyone. Seriously? Where do they come from? Nobody knows. Just because ballots show up, we're supposed to count them? Carrie Ann Burgess was very gracious and gave two words prior to election. We actually felt some confidence about the upcoming election, and we know what happened to Carrie Ann. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Van Ness, followed by Edwin Nelson. The overhead is up. And Ms. Van Ness has some documents to distribute.
Certainly hope this, Susan Van Ness, for the record, the North Valley gal, but apparently Nerluse is not here. Hopefully, this is, it doesn't look like it's going to be seen, is it? Hopefully, this is, it doesn't look like it's going to be seen, is it? Well, I'll get on with this. Looks like it's way too dark, but I'll play it anyway. This is from watching the livestream, which I did a lot, like everyone else did, somewhere down there, getting in person. I was watching the livestream. This is the one that I've talked about, the IT guy, Michael Mulrainy. During this video, and I apologize that it's not coming up, Mr. Mulrainy brought in a laptop, brought down vote bins, sat there and went through them, was on a video call with someone else, kept putting it up to his ear, and I have the whole thing of it. We can get it, and I can show you in more than two minutes or three minutes. Mr. Mulrainy did a video call within the ROV. Now, "An IT employee or any election worker found to be not adhering to the standards might face disciplinary actions and from their employee election officials, which could range from warnings more severe like suspension, termination, depending on perceived risk to election integrity." Now, I would love to show anyone this. I can bring it in. I can bring a whole clip, more than three minutes. I do not know why I am not getting this played. But I think this deserves more investigation. Who brings a video camera in, or a video on a laptop, talks into it, goes through the ballots, goes through our confidential ballots, and submits that data to someone else? Who was it submitted to? I want to know. You can't certify this election, and don't tell me about the law, because I dug deep. And they said, if there's a legal basis, you can not certify it. Now, everyone here could be held responsible, not, not just from the Secretary of State. Plus, the only Commissioners that were down there, that sat there for many hours, was my Commissioner Jean Herman. She sat outside the ROV and gathered data. She knows what happened. She saw the people that could not vote. She was there. The rest of you, except for one that got in an argument with me?
Thank you.
Edwin Nelson, followed by Robin Lovless.
My name's Edwin Nelson. I didn't come here to speak today. I don't have anything prepared, so just bear with me a moment. But I came here, I've been listening to all this stuff. The reason I was here today, I wanted to listen to what was going on. But then I discovered that one of the things I've been trying to do for the last two weeks is find out if my ballot was counted. And, you know, I've been in 15 election, I'm an old guy, and these last two have been sort of a little bit strange to me. But, so I put my ballot in my envelope. I signed it as you're supposed to. My wife did the same. First time I voted early in all these years. And so I brought it to Somerset. There was a big line, and the poll worker noticed that I had my ballot in my hand and said, well, you don't have to wait in the line. You can put it in this lockbox that goes to the county center. I says, okay. He said he'd been doing it six years. He seemed like a trustworthy guy. So I said, okay. I put it in there. But then I left there and I go to myself, you know, I got no receipt or nothing. I don't really know if I even voted, to tell you the truth. I just threw it in the box. So I was concerned. I'm not into any big conspiracy theory. I just go in, I want to find out if my vote is counted. So I got on the Secretary of State's website to check out the history. And I got down there and it said ballot received. And I looked at the history, my history of voting, and it also had a thing in there called ballot counted. And I said to myself, well, they show it received, but it's not counted. So I checked it every day, just to see. And I go, golly, the election's over, and I don't even know if my ballot was counted. And so I waited and waited. So I've been concerned about my ballot being counted. So today I get here and I hear some talk about some of this stuff. And so I said, well, I go down to the registers office, it's right down the hallway here. Maybe they can give me some information. Well, unfortunately, they're closed for the canvas day. But the guy named Chris said, okay. He opened the door up and said, what can I help you with? And I said, well, I just want to find out if my ballot was counted. And he says, well, we're closed today. I said, why are you closed today? Because they're doing a canvas. I says, well, what is the canvas? He says, well, that's when they certify the vote. I says, well, if I don't know my vote is counted, there's no way to rectify this if they certify the election. And so I'm sitting there, I felt like I was in a rock and a hard place there. So even to this point, I still don't know if my ballot's counted. I have no, no way of verifying that that was counted. And so it's been a little bit disturbing to me that the process wouldn't put you in a position to rectify your vote before it's certified. And so that concerns me a bit. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Robin Lovless, followed by Penny Brock.
Hi, my name's Robin Lovless, and this is for the record. So on 10/24, I successfully updated my voter registration and my husband's. I updated our email, and he had a wrong phone number. And I did get voter confirmation for both me and my husband.
That's upside down, ma'am. If you want to flip it around, it's okay.
For me and my husband.
Thank you.
So I, I was checking to see if I did a mail-in ballot on the, I did, I did my mail-in ballot, and I started checking to see if it had been counted. And then on the, my whole voter history since 1992 disappeared from Washoe County. And then I got a note that said that the system isn't migrating all of our information over. But by updating my husband and my email address, it turned us into same-day registration. And my ballot had not been voted, had not been counted. It still has not been counted. Neither has his. I did go to the ROV. I do have proof that my ballot was accepted. And he's saying he has received my ballot, same-day registration, the signature matched, and it still hasn't been counted. And then this video is... So anyway, what that second video said, the employee admitted that there was a flaw in the system that flagged our ballots to same-day registration, and that they were going to talk to their vendor and make sure it was changed. So both of our ballots were turned into provisional ballots, and neither one of them have been counted yet. And I urge you not to certify the election based on the fact that my vote hasn't been counted.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, for the record, today I wear black because I'm in mourning. President Trump won Washoe County on Election Day. And yet, as of today, he has lost Washoe County. That information has not been disclosed to the public. The media has not reported it. You're keeping it from the voters. That is wrong. On, on Election Day, Harris had 82,691. President Trump had 82,973. I started tracking on November 12th. Harris had jumped to 128,378. Trump went down 126,541. They were to stop counting ballots on November 12th. However, they were still counting ballots yesterday. That is a violation of the NRS. As of yesterday, they, they posted twice. I only put down the latest one that I found this morning. At almost 5:00 yesterday afternoon, they reported that Harris had 130,071 votes. President Trump had dropped at 227,443. President Trump also lost Clark County. What's saving Nevada for President Trump is the 15 rural counties. And I believe they reflect the true vote of President Trump throughout the state. In the rural counties, Harris got 53,681. President Trump got a resounding 127,727,000. Trump won by 74,046, 46 votes in the rural counties. It's a sad day in Washoe County when we've had everything that's been reported to you by the previous speakers, saying do not certify the Washoe County election. When you certify, you are saying that it was a fair, honest election. How can you sit there and certify after everything you've heard based on evidence? We know that Washoe County was one of the seven swing counties the Democrats targeted. They pulled it off in Washoe County. It's a sad day for Washoe County. Please do not certify this election.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bruce Foster, followed by Bob Blackstock.
Yeah, hello, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster, for the record, please put my comments per NRS. And of course, my pronoun is we slash the slash people. And hopefully, we can remember that. And again, reiterate that we are not a democracy. That's mob rule. And we are a representative republic. And as Benjamin Franklin asked about that issue, he said, if we can keep it. We understand this election was of consequence. And we all understand that. And I know the quote that I enjoy is that it was either $2 a gallon gas, or are we going to have World War III? I appreciate all these individuals that worked very hard in the ROV as poll workers, as poll watchers, which I was one. And I appreciate all their, you know, efforts. But I have to say is that the inner workings are the issue. And I'm not going to go back about the litany of issues that were brought forth early on that, from people that are much smarter than me in regarding not certifying this election here in Washoe County. Because all we know is that it is wrought with all kinds of issues. But I can only go by my experience is that we got our sample ballot that came first. I opted out. My wife did not. And we both voted early. She submitted hers, and I also then went to, in fact, out those doors, and I voted on the computer. And I wrote several times on that God-blessed iPad, several times, and there's my signature. I could not, for the life of me, get to that point of matching my signature to that. After about a half a dozen tries, I came close, and the gal there, very nice, said, oh, that's your new signature. Oh, okay. So I wonder how many people have been disenfranchised over this whole issue, particularly as it was brought forth, is that how many of us show that it's been, you know, accepted, but as past elections, has it been counted? Have we been disenfranchised? Do not certi...
Thank you.
Bob Blackstock, followed by Donnie Olson.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Commissioner and fellow Commissioners. My name's Bob Blackstock. I was born and grew up in rural Oklahoma and grew up on a ranch. I'm very familiar with the rural issues. And from there, I went on to become an engineer, businessman, and also an inventor. I'm very familiar with business processes and procedures. I've, on this election and previous elections, I also was a poll worker, a poll observer, and also spent a fair amount of time in the observation booth for the processing facility that we have here. And certainly, some of the speakers here prior, earlier this morning, that we sort of got familiar with each other. And what I observed there in the processing room was fairly straightforward manufacturing processes. That familiarization with that was my experience as being an engineer in Silicon Valley, working for, for one of the very big tech companies. So I'm confident the, the process here was good, and I simply encourage the Commission to vote yes on the canvas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Donnie Olson. I was not going to talk today, but ditto everything everybody has said. And instance that happened to our family, I actually brought down six ballots of my grown children and their husbands and turned them in. One of my daughter's ballots, to this day, in her voting history, does, still has not been received. Where is it? All, mine's received, not counted, but my daughter's still indicates ballot has not been received. It was mailed. So there's definitely a problem here. There's been enough. And I'm tired of being called conspiracy theorists and blah, blah, blah. Maybe if it happened to that person or, or their family, they would have a different opinion. But there seems to be a lot of issues. I'm asking you all to not certify today, please. Thank you.
I'm sure that's everybody here in chambers. I do have some emails to place on the record. And now we'll go to Incline Village where we have Yolanda Knack waiting to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clark. There we go.
Please enter my comments into the record. My name is Yolanda Knack. First of all, last August, Secretary of State Cisco Aguilar said that he would clean the voter rolls. That didn't happen. I had hoped Secretary of State Aguilar would deliver on his promise of an honest and fair election. But according to Douglas County Clerk's office, the signature... But according to Douglas County Clerk's office, the signature cards, unbeknownst to us, gave us a new voter ID number. So we now have two voter ID numbers. People who got two ballots, were they able to vote on both voter ID numbers? This needs to be investigated. Carrie Ann Burgess, interim register, who is on administrative leave, I don't know who she is, I don't know anything about her, but there is a video online taken by Channel 8, ABC. It's of Carrie Ann Burgess saying, and I'm quoting her, "The ROV is operating outside of federal and state and federal laws." So this must be investigated. There were over 100 Washoe County voting abnormalities filed with the Secretary of State's office. Were these investigated? Please follow the rule of law. According to federal election laws, which states there can only be one fraudulent vote in 125,000 legal votes. Washoe County does not meet federal law. Certifying this election is illegal. Please do not certify. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item five and Mr. Solero.
Commissioners, item number five is the canvas of the local results of the 2024 general election and direction to the registrar of voters to certify the abstract of the results and transmit a copy of the certified abstract to the Secretary of State. Here with us today is Andrew McDonald and Addison Vedder to provide information to you and answer questions that you may have. I personally would like to thank not only Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Vedder, but all of the county employees, the volunteers, the temporary workers, and the community as a whole who came together to get the general election results to the point of providing this information for your review and declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's applaud our amazing staff. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Commissioner and other distinguished commissioners here in the room. I first want to thank my dedicated and hardworking ROV staff, temps, and contract staff who spent the last three months preparing for this election. Many have worked 30 straight days without a day off and 12-hour days. Lot of hard work went into this election. External department staff, the clerks, communications, technical services, and the sheriff's office all contributed many hours of their own time, many who were salaried and did not earn any additional money or benefits working their extra time. This thanks extends to more than 100 county employees who volunteered to assist. This just proves it's Team Washoe, not Team ROV. The executive team, a special thanks to Kate Thomas, who was there every step of the way by providing amazing team leadership, support to our department, and also to Manager Brown, who provided resources to get through this election. The Secretary of State himself, Mr. Aguilar, and close advisors, we thank you for all your effort and support. Many of his staff assisted with the day-to-day operations, getting us through tight deadlines. We truly couldn't have accomplished this without him and their staff. To the city of Reno, Sparks, and clerk offices, thank you for sending staff to support this election. This is not only your election, but our election, but also yours. To our partners, the United States Postal Service, CISA, Cyber Infrastructure Security Agency, the FBI, local law enforcement, other election vendors, thank you for allowing us to run such a smooth election. Lastly, I want to thank our certification board. This board performs our pre- and post-logic and accuracy testing to ensure our voting system and its ancillary equipment is counting every vote with accuracy. The board consists of Janelle Thomas, who is a Washoe County employee, registered as NPP, Molly Rosen, City of Reno Democrat, and Michelle Harper, City of Sparks Rep. I'd like to provide an overview of the election. Obviously, this is a very unique election for several reasons. We purchased a new mail ballot sorter, envelope sorter. Thank you, Secretary of State, for the funding to get this done. That sorter processed mail ballots at a much more rapid pace than the previous mail ballot sorter. This equipment integrated with the voter registration system to pass data back and forth regarding the disposition of every single mail ballot. This is the first-ever modern top-down voter registration system for the Secretary of State's office in the state of Nevada. As part of the voter registration system, we rolled out a new in-person voter check-in system, Pollpads or iPads, at all of our vote centers, which process voters quickly through the lines. Yes, there were long lines. That means people showed up, and that's a good thing. We procured four new mail ballot extractors to increase our extraction efficiencies, which assisted us in getting ballots into the tally faster. Regarding election administration, I provided executive management updates daily on how the election was going. Those were provided to the commissioners here daily and sometimes twice a day, explaining how the election was proceeding. All validly cast ballots were counted. There were no errors or admissions in this election. No voters were disenfranchised. We ran a fair, accurate, secure, and transparent election. In-person early voting vote centers, there were 24 of those, with drop boxes from October 19th through November 1st. In-person voting on Election Day was conducted at 55 locations with drop boxes. Election Day was the busiest vote center mail ballot drop, at 8,858 mail ballots being dropped on Election Day. On 10/6, or October 16th, I should say, was the busiest U.S. Postal Service mail drop at 8,107 mail ballots being dropped on October 16th. Our public call center received 7,957 calls with an eight-person staff. Our voter hotline received 5,342 calls to assist with the vote centers calling our staff for assistance. We had observers every single day here. There were 139 Democrats that showed up, 221 reps, and four- I'm sorry? Republicans. I'm a Republican, if you need to know. Election was observed by all parties.
We have a meeting room user in the meeting room now. I think he set you up in the studio or on whatever.
I'm not sure that feedback is coming back. In-person same-day registrations, provisional ballot check-ins, there were 6,895 of them. 5,874 were counted on November 12th in that update that you'll see. Moving on with the election administration. On Veterans Day, NV Energy had a power outage, not just impacting the registrar of voters, but the entire Washoe County complex and the surrounding region. After 2.5 hours, right away, actually, I called facilities, but after 2.5 hours, we actually came back up online. No work was performed in the dark. I removed every single person out of that room within two to five minutes. So ballots were locked away, and observers were there the entire time. Post-logic and accuracy testing was done yesterday. This is a voter verified paper trail, a VB PAT, as they call it. So the ROV office is required to run 16 of those voter paper trails, but we did 20. So we went above and beyond there. This process audits the votes cast against the votes tallied in the voting system. There were 6,780 pre-marked test ballots ran through the scanners yesterday to verify the voting system is accurately tabulating the vote. We implemented panic buttons at 55 of Election Day vote centers and 24 early voting sites. A panic button was pushed as one poll worker felt threatened by a voter who would not remove his campaign attire, or as we call it, electioneering. The situation was escalated. The police arrived, and ultimately, the voter calmed down and was able to vote. Other panic buttons were pushed accidentally in error. Most incidents at the vote centers were electioneering-related, specifically signs erected within the 100-foot marker, which were swiftly taken down. But I do want to mention that the ROV office is not responsible for taking action for signage outside the 100-foot electioneering marker. Code enforcement is responsible for signage outside the 100-foot marker. With that, I would like to turn it over to Addie Vedder, who definitely stepped up during this election to fill some big shoes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm going to continue the election administration update. One note I would like to address is that our system, from the voter registration system to the Secretary of State system, we're transmitting data. So when you're reflecting, you're looking at your ballot, and you're reflecting, and it says mail ballot received, it's actually not going to change to mail ballot counted until after we certify the vote. So our source of truth is our voter registration system. That is where you'll see instantly if your ballot gets rejected or accepted. And you can call, we encourage people to call our office to reflect that status, just as a note. To continue, we had 6,352 mail ballots adjudicated. One thing that we are going to make a goal for the next election is to educate the public and enhance the instructions provided so that we can clearly articulate how to properly cross out your vote, how to properly do that so that we are not adjudicating that many ballots. Obviously, the goal is to count as many votes as we can, so educating the public on how to do that is important. We did receive 1,509 EAS ballots. What these are is they're electronic ballots received from military, citizen overseas, ADA, tribal members. We received those through a program from the Secretary of State. So we actually go ahead and duplicate all of those ballots to run them through the system. We also received 916 votes by email, which is also applicable to those categories, military, citizen, overseas, et cetera. So we received ballots for Yukava voters from three different sources, mail, email, and the EAS system. We did duplicate 3,710 ballots. Again, this includes all ballots received via email or EAS. And this also includes ballots that we received back from voters that had tears, rips, stains, anything that would make them unreadable when we scanned them into the system. We cured 1,875 ballots. As of 11:12 at 5:00 p.m., there were 1,034 uncured ballots. We did reach out to voters via correspondence. We called voters if there was a phone number on file, and we also emailed voters if we had that information. So we reached out to voters, and then we also provided five ways to cure. In addition, two of those ways are actually online, so you can do it via QR code or through text to cure. So just as a note for that. And then, one thing as well is we did not end up implementing automatic signature verification, which is a function of the new mail sorter that we received prior to this election. We were able to keep up with manual signature verification doing it, which is essentially, that means that we did, every single signature that we verified was verified by one person, looked at the signature that was the reference image, as well as the signature that was on the ballot. So we have a great data sample size to use from this entire election so that we can implement ASV for all future elections in Washoe County. We did receive 20,864 undeliverable ballots. These were never opened. They're stored securely in the cage. No voter was enfranchised, disenfranchised. If we received an undeliverable ballot for a voter, they could go and vote in person if they wanted. They could request an additional ballot through our office. And if they were an inactive voter and they wanted to go vote, they could go to a vote center, update their information, and vote there as well. We will be taking action by the end of this year to inactivate voters who qualify to be inactivated after the primary election, but were not. And we will be starting the process of sending the address confirmation cards for any undeliverable ballots that we received for this election to start that process of updating our records and our voter rolls. Another note is, any ballots that we received after Election Day were checked for postmarks, so we verified that they were postmarked by Election Day or before. Or if they were an indeterminate postmark, those were counted up to three days after the election. And we also want to make sure that we're in compliance with NRS, so the three days is for indeterminate postmarks, and then we received ballots up to four days after the election.
The slide that you're reviewing right now is the slide that I sent to Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, who I believe forwarded this to the commissioners on a daily basis. This would be the final slide. So there were 334,118 active registered voters, total turnout 79%. How does that compare to the 2020 election? It was an 83% turnout. Early voting, 93,110 early voting folks turned out. Election Day, 40,349. We had a lot of provisional voters. Of those, 5,874 validly cast their ballots, and those were counted on 11/12, or November 12th. 51% of the total turnout was in-person. And election results update, so on the 14th, all validly cast ballots were entered into the count at 3:48 p.m. What does that mean? That means all in-person, mail ballots, military, overseas, ADA, tribal, and provisional ballots were in the count.
For our total ballots received, we received 130,874 mail ballots counted. 39.17% of the total vote is by mail ballot on total active registered voters. It's 49% of the total turnout is by mail. And again, the statistics for cured, 1,875 ballots were cured, 1,034 ballots were left uncured as of the 12th deadline. As far as timeline, as Andrew mentioned previously, we did our post-logic and accuracy testing yesterday. It completed at 6:51 p.m., and we verified that the expected results matched what was scanned in. Today, we're doing our canvas of the vote to certify the election result, and the last day to request a recount is November 20th.
Like to display the election summary report, possible? So in closing comments, the election summary report reflects the numbers that I just put up in front of you with the turnout. And I'd like to say that we asked the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to certify the canvas of the vote for the 2024 November general election. With an almost 80% voter turnout, your constituency has their voice heard at the ballot box, and they're telling you what they want and who they want to run their local, state, and federal offices. Thank you.
Thank you. And the board didn't get those paper copies of the election summary report. We got them in our email, but I don't see them up here. Did anyone get them? Can we have those?
You're referring to these?
No, the one that your report, yes.
This report?
Yes.
It was attached to the Granicus agenda, but yes, we can definitely get you-
It's not on our staff report. I don't see it on the electronic staff. But yes, if we could just have those copies handed out to the board.
And I can give you every single one that we posted to ensure that the number is incremented properly, so you can see every single report. Yeah.
Just whatever the-
The final?
The final is great.
No problem.
That's what I'm asking for, but other board members may have additional questions or comments.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like to take a brief break, and we can get the copies distributed to you?
That would be wonderful. Let's take a bio break and get those copies. We'll be back at 12:15. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I will now be calling this Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order after our quick recess, or just to remind folks we're on item number five. We just had a staff report. And now I will throw it to our DA's office, just to give us a summary of what we're doing today, and then I'll have our county commissioners ask questions, and then we'll do public comment again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've heard from the Registrar of Voters Office. They provided a comprehensive report this morning on the final results and the count of the votes that were cast in this election. They have reported that there are no clerical errors that are separately notable under the canvas statute. And at this point in time, I think it's clear that you have a duty to carry out the canvas today and move it up the chain to the state. From there, a lot of the arguments and things that were brought up today, you're not passing on the validity of those arguments. You're not passing on the correctness or incorrectness of those claims or those observations that people have made this morning. Those are the types of things that could possibly be raised in an election contest argument, which can't happen until the certification has been done. That's a separate statute and a separate process. It happens in court, and the court is equipped to deal with those types of things, if there's any merit to them. So as it stands at this point, you have a duty to carry out the canvas today.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Herman, do you have comments or questions? No. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's certainly interesting to, you know, hear again some of the things that are of, you know, major concern to many of you, and we've also received information as well via email or our conversations or calls or what have you. But what is really, really clear is that there is an opportunity for every single one of your concerns, observations, to actually have a process for, you know, looking at that and having it clearly investigated. This is not a place by the law, that I clearly now understand, to have any investigation. There's no provision in what we're doing today that allows for that at all. There's a process that you all can exercise, and I'd encourage you to do that. I'd also encourage you to think about the possibilities of exploring some of the legislative action that can take place with some of the things that we've all heard. You know, the delay or various other things are components of the law as written. And kudos to Andrew, Addy, to all of you sitting in here, to Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, to the clerk, to all of her staff, and to the amazing amount of volunteers who really worked extremely hard to produce an election that I honestly believe is truly to be commended under the circumstances. And there were a lot of circumstances, and we're all human beings, and it's hard. It's hard. So kudos to y'all. So really, I'm going to do this, and I'd like to. Please, can we just do this and say thank you to all of you?
Another round of applause for the staff.
All of you, every single one, all the folks that aren't here, all the folks that are here, all the folks that want to do it, you know, in a couple of years, or maybe not. But the reality is, is that we have a legal duty, and I have spoken with so many legal folks who know the law. I am very proud of being a person who abides by the law. And if you don't want to have the law a certain way, there's processes at the legislature to change that. Today, as the provisions are written, we have a duty, we have a ministerial duty, it is a function, that we are looking at the results that were presented, and we're acknowledging those results and sending those on with any noted errors, but as was reported, there aren't any noted errors in this report. We're acknowledging the report and then sending it on to the Secretary of State's office for the continuous of the process. So please, every single one of you that have any documented observations, some of the information that was shared, fill out election integrity reports. Go through the process. Your voice does matter, but this is not the body to do it. I said it the last time, and I'm not sure if, you know, sometimes it's hard. Everyone wants to do the right thing. All of us want to do the right thing, but we all have a legal obligation. I am proud to always abide by the law. Whether I agree with everything or not is not my place to discern it. It is my place to follow it. And that is what I'm going to do today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea, and Commissioner Clark.
My mic is on. I've got a document that I want to share with the other Commissioners. I don't know if they've seen it. I'm going to give this to the clerk and have her pass this out, put it on the public record. First of all, I was kind of surprised that we had public comment go before the Commissioners' comment. Usually, we get to hear from the folks, and then we can chime in on what somebody might have said. So I didn't like the order of this meeting to start with. We usually have, we had the Commissioner comments first, then we had public comment. So I wanted to hear from the people so I can understand what the people are interested in before I have an opportunity to talk. So that didn't take place today, and I don't know why. But I asked the DA about it initially, and he didn't seem to know about it either. But I just want to get that on the record. Everybody's taking time to thank everybody today. I'd like to thank the voters for showing up and voting. Those are the folks that I want to salute that showed up and voted. I'd like anybody that believes that their vote wasn't counted to get in touch with the Registrar of Voters Office. I'd like the Registrar of Voters Office to put a detailed list of those that feel that was the case, and then give us, the Commissioners, that report, and find out who voted and who knows they voted, and who doesn't believe that their vote was counted per the Secretary of State's website, or the county, or wherever you're looking. So I need to make sure that everybody... I mean, that was one of my biggest concerns today, when people show up and say, "My vote hasn't been counted." Well, it either has or it hasn't. So I'd like a report to the Commissioners about that. Also, I'd like to know why the office, the Registrar's office is closed today. You know, we should, I mean, the whole staff seems to be sitting here. Somebody could have been watching this meeting on their computers and still had the office open. I'd like to go over there and find out if my vote was counted. So I couldn't do that because it looks like they're all here. So I don't know why that is. We have other departments in this county, and they don't close when they make a presentation to the county and bring their whole staff here. So I'd just like to understand why that's taking place. I want to note about the news media made such a big deal out about the panic buttons. We have to have panic buttons. Oh my goodness, panic buttons. And we find out that one panic button's used because somebody's wearing campaign garb. You know, when I think of panic buttons, I think that there's something on a different level than... level than somebody wearing some campaign garb. So I don't know if that would rise to the level of hitting a panic button. Maybe there's other ways to deal with that rather than hitting a panic button. I'd also like to know, and I didn't get a chance to, have some questions with the staff about how many ballots were returned this time, undeliverable? What was the total number of that? I've got a couple of other questions, so just maybe we'll get them all at once. I'd like the number of, they said they cured some of the ballots. They cured the ones that they had phone numbers for. They cured the ones that they had emails for. I'd like to know what the total number of phone numbers that they had, what the total number of emails, what percentage of the cured, uncured ballots, they had that information for. So I think it's important to find out what percentage of folks were actually contacted, and what percentage of those actually were cured. So those are some questions I have for you, if you have those answers. Please.
As far as the undeliverable ballots received, we received 20,864 for the general election.
What was the number again?
20,864.
And that was for what category that I asked for?
Those are undeliverable or returned.
Okay, so returned. And then we had about, what, 25,000 plus in the primaries? Is that correct?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I believe it was around there.
It was just around 26,000 that time. Okay, returned, undeliverable. Okay, so I'm looking at that as potential 20,000 folks that didn't have the right address, or I believe they're real people, I just worried about their ability to vote. So then, of those returned, it'll be an interesting study to find out how many of those folks came in, because I had this question posed to me by certain news reporters, and I bring this number up, and they say, well, they could still vote, they could just show up on the day and have a provisional ballot. So do we have a number of how many of those might have fixed their own dilemma by showing up and voting?
I don't have that number, but I will say we will be getting that number, because essentially what we'll be doing is we'll be taking action on those voters' records who didn't vote in person, or who we didn't update their information or anything like that. So what we'll do is anyone who we got an undeliverable ballot for that didn't go vote in person, we'll get an address confirmation card sent, which will start the process of removing them from the voter rolls.
So we've heard about this removing of the voter rolls for some time now, and I'm talking since two years that I know of, and it still seems to be lagging. I've got a letter here from the county manager, who's our, he's our supreme leader, apparently, as far as all things Registrar of Voters office, Mr. Brown. And he talks about, in this letter, his words, not mine, approximately 28,954 voters who did not return address verification cards were not designated as inactive by statutory deadline. Do you want to talk about, somebody want to talk about that? This is Mr. Brown, not me saying it. Mr. Brown's a letter to Carrie Ann Burgess, saying that, and again, I'm not accusing her of doing this, this is Mr. Brown's words, I'm not alleging anybody did anything, but when Mr. Brown writes a letter to the Registrar of Voters at the time, she was the Registrar of Voters, that 28,954 voters remained on the rolls past the statutory deadline. Is that a Nevada statutory deadline? Is that a federal statutory deadline? What deadline? I wish Mr. Brown was here so he could answer those questions, but maybe you can help me.
So those 28,000 were undeliverable ballots we received from the primary election. What we did is after the primary election, we sent those address confirmation cards to start the process. They have a certain amount of time to respond, and if they don't respond within that timeframe, then we can take action and inactivate those voters. And that wasn't done after the primary election?
That wasn't done? So let's call, and let's round up, let's not round down. It's 28,900, not 28,000. So it's almost 29,000. So approximately, I'm going to use my number, 29,000 folks that should have been taken off the voter rolls, didn't get taken off the voter rolls in the time allotted by either the federal government or the state government. So can you give us some more information about that?
So there is a 90-day deadline, federal deadline, from the National Voter Registration Act, that we can't do any voter list maintenance 90 days before an election. So that date was August 6th of this year, and we didn't take that action prior to August 6th, so we couldn't take action on those until after this election.
And you weren't here at that time, is that correct? You came in after that date, or were you here at that?
I think we need to be very careful about accusing staff and this HR letter.
I just asked for chronological order.
Okay.
All right? Quit interrupting me.
Let's just be very careful. You're treading on HR issues, I'm just warning you.
I just wanted to put a timeline. I understand she came in, I thought she came in after. So I'm just trying to figure out, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. Never have, never will. I'm asking questions. If a question sounds like an accusation to you, what might you have to hide? That's a question.
So feel free to, how you want to answer that. You don't necessarily need to answer that.
You always, always, always have to censor speech. That's not going to happen with me. This is the county manager who runs the Registrar of Voters office, who oversees it, it's under his command, his control, that and the other county managers, assistant county managers. And if the county manager, not Mike Clark, is asking questions or making allegations or asking questions, it's not Mike Clark, I'm just repeating this, and I think that the public needs to know about this. Now I'm going to ask you a question. Were you aware of this particular letter that I just passed out? Were you aware of Mr. Brown's concern at the Registrar of Voters? Were you made aware of it on October 4th?
We're not doing this. Today, we are here for the canvas of the vote.
No, we're allowed to ask questions about this.
No, we're not doing this. I will not do this. You can ask questions about the canvas. You have made it clear that, and it was clarified by staff, that 28,954 voters were not designated as inactive. That was clarified, and that was agreed to. What else would you like to ask, Commissioner Clark?
I'm going to continue down that same line, because I want to get to the bottom of this. I want to know why the county manager had this information, and I want to know if he shared this information with you, because as a sitting county commissioner, this information wasn't shared with me until today. So if there were concerns with the operation of the Registrar of Voters office from the leader of this organization that manages that particular office, and was sharing this information with you, and the other commissioners weren't made aware of it, maybe there was something we could have done prior to the election, not after the election, to address what the concerns were. I'm looking at a letter here that's got about six different problems with the Registrar of Voters office before the election. This is Mr. Brown's words, not mine. I put it on public record, everybody can look at it and make their own decisions about this.
Great, now what would you like to ask?
But the question is, did you know about this before?
And we'll continue on. What questions would you like to ask on the canvas?
Can I interject? Madam Chair, I want to interject. On October 8th of this year, Manager Brown did make a statement about the voters that were supposed to have been inactivated but were not inactivated, and that's on the video of the October 8th, 2024 BCC meeting during commissioner and managers announcements. But I want to add a clarification on another point, too. With respect to the number of voters that were supposed to have been inactivated before the deadline, it doesn't mean that their registrations would have been canceled if they had acted in time. It means they would have been made inactive, which means they wouldn't have got a mail-in ballot. They still would have been able to vote, they still would have been registered voters, it would not have changed that. I want to make that clarification out there. I know it's very technical, but that is the status of the law on that. They still would have been eligible voters, even if they had been inactivated.
I understand that. My question, though, is, according to Mr. Brown's words, not mine, in this letter, he, I'll read it again. Approximately, of approximately 48,205 address verification cards were mailed in June of 2024, approximately 28,954 voters who did not return verification cards were not designated as inactive by statutory deadline. That's what I'm talking about. Whether they got to vote or not, they weren't, and again, I want clarification, I'm making any accusations. What statutory deadline is he referring to?
The Federal Voting Rights Act, and there's also a Nevada statute that is the counterpart, and it says that you can't do systemic list-wide maintenance within 90 days of an election with the federal office on it.
So why wasn't this done within the statutory timeframe?
That I don't have an answer for you.
That's a question that I have. Why wasn't it done? If it's a statutory regulation, federal, state mimics that, or copies that, or mirrors that, and it wasn't done, why wasn't it done? That's the question.
And I think that the answer is before you in the letter, Commissioner Clark, what else would you like to ask?
All right, I'm going to make my statement now. As you know, my name is Commissioner Mike Clark, District 2. I'd like to start by expressing my thanks to the staff and all volunteers who facilitated the November 24 general election. Though we may not agree with the results presented today, without your hard work and effort, we will not have been able to complete the 2024 general election. Many of you may know that I started my career in real estate and worked my way up to an ownership position. I ran for office to try and help people in my community, I saw a need for some change. Regardless of whether I agree or disagree with someone's position, I still have a job to do and do it. The type of leadership comes from the top down. Sadly, not every person in a position of power agrees with me. During the certification process of the primary election, I was called an election denier for raising valid concerns with our voting system. However, as an elected official, no, as an American, it is our duty to preserve and protect fairness and transparency of every election, and support the men and women who make it happen. I speak today to apologize to the Washoe County because we didn't do our duty. Since the primary election, our county enacted a new voter system, instead of allowing the interim Registrar of Voters to implement the system in a little time that was available to the office. Our executive staff placed ridiculous demands on her and are now being investigated after she was forced to take personal leave. After her health, after her health privacy was violated with a text message from County Manager Brown, was disclosed to the press, the interim ROV was told that she cannot come back to work based on an agreement that never occurred. When she finally came forward to the press, she was placed on administrative leave, and at the same time, the county manager went on medical leave for a planned surgery during the election. We had no leadership during this election, and that is on us as commissioners for letting this happen. What I'm most concerned about is the fact that we are facing an employment lawsuit while so many members of Washoe County have reported.
Madam Chair, point of order. And I hate doing this, Commissioner Clark, and I am not out to, you know, trip you up, but this is a discussion of a personnel matter that is not, it seems to be outside the boundary of whether or not these are or are not the votes that were cast.
I'll skip ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. What I am concerned about is, we've received, some people have received multiple ballots in the mail at their homes and office addresses. A text message and postcard was sent out by the Secretary of State to all driver's license holders, including non-citizens, telling them to register to vote, that after being directed to develop a chain of custody forms for local branches or office, election sites, at the direction of the county manager, that this chain of custody forms are not followed, that 28,954 address verification cards were not designated as inactive, that apartments were flagged as commercial so that apartment dwellers didn't receive ballots, that individuals refused the opportunity to vote because they could not verify their precinct number, that despite a signature verification process, individuals' original driver's license signatures were used as valid signatures. To my knowledge, the county never completed a full front-end and back-end mock election or addressed the issues raised by the new voting system before one of our leading tech staff members walked off the job. Somehow, with all these issues, we have record-breaking voter turnout. I'm not an election denier, and clearly, the person I wanted to win won the state. However, that does not mean that all protocols were followed, and we can truly certify this election with all the errors that I've listed. In my opinion, and based on information I've received, not every vote counted. For that reason, I respectfully request that we separately note any and all clerical errors discovered pursuant to NRS 293.387. Further, based on the issues that I have stated, and the fact that the interim Registrar of Voters and I have the same law firm, I believe it's a conflict of interest for me to vote in this certification.
DA Edwards, could you clarify our board rules on conflicts of interest?
Yeah, so the statute is 281A.420, and there's four main categories of conflict. One is if you have a pecuniary interest in the outcome. Two is if you've received a gift or a loan in connection with the matter. The fourth one is if you have appeared before a different body, essentially as a kind of lobbyist or a representative for compensation within the past year on the same matter. Those three do not appear to be applicable at all to this. There's one other category. The other category is if you have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another that renders you incapable of being reasonably impartial in the proceedings. That is typically a familial-type interest, where, for example, you have someone in your household who's presenting a land use application in front of the board. That would be a commitment in a private capacity to the person in your household, but it's not just people in your household, it's also broader than that. It goes into things like business partners, close friends, or relationships that are similar like that. What has just been brought up, if I understand correctly, is that the Commissioner Clark has the same law firm as the law firm that's involved in the other matter that he was talking about today. Off the cuff, sitting here right now, I can't say that's a conflict, but it's not up to me in the end whether or not it is a conflict. It's ultimately up to the commissioner whether it is. However, the rules regarding whether that reduces the quorum and the count necessary require a written opinion from our office to say whether or not it is, in fact, a conflict, and recusal does not reduce those quorums or those counts necessary unless there's a written opinion from our office stating that. This is the first I've been asked of this as of this morning, or I guess it's afternoon now. This is the first that I've been asked this. I don't know, I obviously don't have time right now to do an analysis, a full analysis of this conflict issue. We actually have a group in our office that does conflict analyses. Many of you have invoked that in the past to get guidance on different issues. We have not been able to do that. I'm not prepared to state that on the record at this time, and that's just because I don't have the ability right now. And I doubt everybody out here in the audience wants to sit here while I log on to Westlaw and start doing research on this issue. If it sounds, it's onerous, and I don't think people, I don't think we can do that right now. So that's where I am on it right now. I can't say that, I can't say, and I can't put in writing that there is a conflict of interest on this.
So one last comment then. I believe I have a conflict of interest to vote on this certification, and as such, I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
I would ask for a recess of perhaps five to 10 minutes, let's say 10, so I can at least do a cursory perusal and double-check on some of those statutes. Again, this is the first time I'm analyzing this off the fly right now, so I would like to have a chance to take a look at that real quick, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Let's just give, do you really only need 10 minutes, or do you?
Like, if it's something that's gonna go beyond 10 minutes, then it's probably gonna be like 10 hours.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, yes.
Okay. Then, all right, we will start again at 1 o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Commissioner Garcia, are you still on the phone?
I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I would like to please note for the record that Commissioner Clark inappropriately tried to recuse himself and then stormed off. Please let the record reflect that. Thank you very much. We now will be moving to, are there any other Commissioner comments?
Can I finish out the result of what I looked at? So I just conferenced back with the office, and we took a look at some of the statute in the limited time that we've had on this. And we are not prepared, I'm not prepared, to opine at this point that there is a recusable conflict of interest for the commissioner, mainly because the private capacity commitment involved here does not appear to be related to this matter. It appears to be related to some other matter, and there may be other reasons as well. However, I will say that that is provisional. We have not had time to delve into this and parse all of the information that might be out there, so that is a caveat with respect to that conclusion. Regardless, at this point, the Commissioner has announced he's recusing himself and is no longer present at the meeting under NRS 281A.420, Subsection 5. If a commissioner does that, then the number of commissioners necessary for a quorum is reduced, as though that commissioner is no longer part of the commission for purposes of this matter. There are now four of you. The net effect, however, is that you still need three votes to pass the item, which is the same if you had five commissioners. So you still need three to pass the item. The commissioner's recusal and reasons have been stated on the record. Our position's been stated on the record, and I think you're ready to proceed at this point.
Thank you very much. And now I look to the rest of the board. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything else before we move to public comment? Commissioner Andrea, Commissioner Garcia, I'm so sorry, I did not call on you. Do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Other than a big thank you to staff and volunteers, to all those who filed for candidacy this year, and most importantly, to everybody who cast their vote this election cycle, and I'm ready to make the motion when you are.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our public comment on item five, and if, Mr. Salara, before we could call folks up, Madam Clerk, if you could just repeat the public comment rules, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Commissioners, a speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted. However, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of Candid Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person to be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We have several names again, so if you hear the second name, please queue yourself up. First up, we have Drew Rebar, followed by Marie Rodriguez.
Drew Rebar, for the record, if you could zoom in on this. I checked my own voter thing, and evidently, you guys received my ballot. It doesn't say counted on there. I guess I just don't count. You just don't put me on the sample ballot. You don't count my general election ballot, but you got it. Thanks very much, guys. Let's talk about ministerial duties. In our Constitution, we've got three branches of government: executive, legislative, judicial. Let's talk about the history, the root word of minister, ministerial duty. Is it a legislative branch that has ministerial duties? Y'all go out there and, you know, do the gun salute with the sheriff that you can, oh, the sheriff, he's an executive, I'm sorry, or the DA, he's an executive branch because they enforce the laws, they do what, you know, you, the legislative branch, say. Judges, do judges have ministerial duties? Not the legislative branch. You are the voice of the people. You get to speak for the people. So I actually feel kinda sorry for you guys. The executive branch has kind of walked you up to the gallows and put a noose around your neck and said, if you don't vote the way we say you need to vote, we're gonna prosecute ya. They put a gun to your head in an euphemistic kind of way, right? That's sad. I get it, you're afraid to vote, your heart, your conscience, you know. I do appreciate Mr. Edwards before saying, "Vote your conscience." I think that's really what you should do as representatives of the people in the legislative branch. It's your job to tell the executives what to do. It's your job to make the laws, to tell the executives what to do. It's not the executives' job to tell you how to vote. That's all I really got. Thank you very much. You guys have a great day, and again, congratulations on winning all of your elections, those that are up there, and those of us that didn't win our elections, well, I'm gonna try again. I'll see you in two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, please maintain my comments on the record.
Next up, Marie Rodriguez. Marie Rodriguez, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Mine also says the ballot was received, but as was explained to me by the ROV, most of the mail-in ballots say this, it has been counted, and it won't change till counted until after today. I understand that. My husband's. My husband's is the same. He also mailed it in, says it was received. I never doubted, once it was received, that it was counted. So I came in here prepared to ask that our county commissioners do their duty as instructed by the state and certify the vote this afternoon. And I also want to go on record as saying thank you to everyone who worked so hard during this election. I know they put in a lot of hours, and it was extremely stressful, and I thank everyone for doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Meyer, followed by Robbie Williams.
Okay, she said no. Or no?
Victoria.
Okay, she's coming.
Victoria Meyer, for the record, I don't have a whole lot to say, except that this election season will be adjudicated now. We've elected a president who will pursue these issues, and I hope that all the truth comes out. I just, you know, from the county to the city to other boards here in our wonderful town that I've lived in for, I can't count now, because it's been so many years, at least 50, I think. I love Washoe County, I love Nevada, and it's just become a pool of confusion, lack of trust in our leaders locally, and it's going to be adjudicated. It will be. It will be. It's a new day, and we're not, this is just the beginning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Robbie Williams, followed by Penny Brock.
We've got a sick county, and it breaks my heart. My name's Robbie Williams. Please include this in the record. I am one of those observers Andrew mentioned that spent, oh gosh, so many days here, so many hours here, 13 hours just on Election Day alone. I have five multi-violation reports that I've already filed with the Secretary of State. So we already, we can tell we're very divided here. I am hoping someday that we can come back together. This division and hatred has broken up once loving families, and I personally blame the media. The media controls what these people hear. The media protects what is being done. So in my world of a high-level journalist daughter, I will tell you that when you control the information to the people, you control the people. The presidential race has been decided. So why is there so many people here wanting to push this through even though they're hearing our issues? It's the down-ballot races. These people are the Democrats, the socialists, the Marxists, and the communists. They're in a hurry to push certification. Those are the candidates that they are trying to protect the vote of. We need to start identifying all the subcategories of the Democrat Party on all nonpartisan races, so we know what their political ideology is. Did we really elect a man who's used tax dollars to travel and luxury, has multiple ethics charges politically and for his law office, and has been forced to take election integrity class, named Devin Reese? Yes, we did. Should the press had brought to the attention these many, many election ethic charges before an informed vote by the people? Yes, they should have. I want to know who and how is chosen to certify the election. Janelle Thomas, who replaced the friend of Ms. Hill who stole her opponent's sign. I observed her working in the ballot counting room, so isn't that a conflict? The very people who are trying to observe are being prevented to do so. Curing, I tried to cure a woman. I was helped by Addie. When we went to vote, we were told the voter, the rolls hadn't been updated since the prior day, people were voting unupdated. We spent a lot of money for this election, for this equipment. Is the senior staff vetted on whether they ever worked for Dominion Companies or subsidiaries?
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Kelly Stevens.
Penny Brock, for the record. Why do I put this back up on the screen? Because it says it was an election of a president and vice president. Therefore, it comes under federal law. So when one of the Commissioners says she's going to follow Nevada law, no, you are obligated in a federal election, first and foremost, to follow federal law. That is why, in the coming days, agencies will be in here investigating, and for those that certify this election, you will be hearing from them. I'm here to tell you that on Election Day, I went to Depoley Middle School to vote in person. I was denied the right to vote because of the new electronic poll books. I knew that this was going to be a long process, because we used to sign the paper poll books. You would walk up standing, sign your name, and be on your way. Oh, there were chairs. We had to sit down, because this was a lengthy process. You want to know why there were lines? Because of these silly goofy stupid electronic poll books. There's huge issues with them. They're connected to the Internet. Also, it discriminates against the in-person voter from the mail ballot voter. You were supposed to check a box that you will not go vote. Again, mail ballot, people don't do that. Then you had to certify your, what was on the screen? Your name, address, date of birth, your precinct number, and site one. I looked at the poll worker and I said, "I can't check that box, because I don't know that the precinct number is correct, and I don't know what site one is." She goes, "Then you can't vote." When you hit the continue screen, it won't continue, because I didn't check the box. To certify under law, it wouldn't let me vote. I was disenfranchised. Other problems with those electronic poll books, it appears they're now going to be deemed essential. No, we want paperback. It kicks out a voter from voting if you don't click that little certification, your information's correct. Where in Nevada law does it say that? Where? How many other voters didn't get to vote, because they wouldn't check the box either? So this election not only involves all the other things...
Thank you.
Kelly Stevens, followed by Alan Munson.
Hi again. I'd like to call attention to the report that I handed out to each of you previously, as I got up here and spoke. It's a report filed by the FBI on November 12th, and it's authored by the CIA, the Department of Justice, the NSA, and numerous international intelligence agencies, proving that your election software is compromised. I provided this report to you in detail to show you that not just the people who are here with the Department of Defense, former Department of Defense, who told you your security systems are breached, but I'm providing detail that your software is breached. You won't listen to any of us, and you lean into, "I'm going to certify, because it's my legal duty and it's my legal responsibility." You're certifying fraud. How is that legally acceptable? And quite frankly, I'm so surprised at you, Mr. Edwards, for saying that people must move forward to do this. It's not acceptable. Read the report closely. We demand a forensic audit, not a recount. We need to put this nonsense to bed once and for all, and fix a system that you guys continue to break, and you won't fix it. I'm going to read a couple of things to support this report, including numerous affidavits and election violation reports that I've personally submitted to the Secretary of State, that have gone to many attorneys throughout the country. All eyes are on you. Not that you care, because you're going to vote to certify anyway, we already know. The Washoe County Voting Processing Center, physical, electronic, and personal security items do not meet the minimum requirements for a secure processing facility. Chain of custody was not upheld. Voters are not being shown as having voted. Double ballots were sent to voters. Voters were told they could no longer be found in the system. Signature verification was not done to standard or specification. Signature verification workers pass signatures at an impossible rate, at nearly one per second. ROV Burgess admitted to breaking federal laws by not cleaning the voter rolls. I mean, it just, it's countless. It's 2,000, 26,902 votes simply disappeared from November 7th to November 8th. How does that happen? Jen Easterly with CISA gets online and does an interview with MSNBC, saying that this is the most secure election ever, and it's not. And here you are canvassing fraud, certifying fraud. It's not acceptable. And this report, since you don't listen to us, witnesses, none of you were there. Since you won't listen to us, how about listening to the CIA, and the NSA, and the FBI? But you won't. And I hope you all didn't get indicted. Have a nice day. Joyous day.
Thank you.
Alan Munson, followed by Cliff Nellis.
Alan Munson, a resident of Washoe County in District 4. I had no plans of coming to speak here today, and at 10 o'clock, it was snowing heavily, but I was watching it on YouTube, and I just became concerned. I just want my voice as a citizen of this county to be heard. And I, you know, I heard that it's a rule you must certify, so then I guess my question is, why even have this meeting? You don't have a choice. You have to certify an election that has a lot of questions to it, you know? And just as a regular citizen, you know, I would think we'd want to clean up the process and make it something that we as citizens have faith in. I think you've heard here a lot of citizens say, "There's a lot of problems with our election process." And, you know, I'd almost say, you know, obviously, you have your choice. I'd almost say, I'd challenge that rule that you have to certify something that some people have said is a fraud. And, you know, you've got to think about that. Do you really want to certify something? You've all heard the questions, you know? With that aside, you know, my hope, my hope here is that you'd work to try to clean up this voting process. You know, a lot of states with more population can get it done in one day. Why do we take, what, a week and a half or whatever to count the vote? And I don't have a lot more. I just, you know, want to see a process that, and hey, I would love a committee, Democrats, independents, and Republicans, to work on cleaning this up, something that we have faith in, that we can believe in. That's all I want. So thank you. And, you know, I thank each one of you for doing your job, and I thank the people who are in the administrative office. You know, I think they need to have better rules, maybe, to follow, and that I would hope would be what, you know, the Commissioners could come up with. So again, I thank you, and I hope that you hear what everyone's been saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Nellis, followed by Val White.
I had three pages, and actually, I only got to two, so I needed to finish the third page. So there are, there are problems with this, our election system. There was a man who was in charge of the California Lottery System, or one of the executives that was in the observation booth with me, and he said a few things. I'd like to get a list of things. He said, "If they ran the California Lottery like you guys are running our elections, nobody would buy any lottery tickets, because they would have no confidence in the system." Let me read just a few things that he said to me, I wrote down with notes. He observed there were no floor auditors when the ballots were being processed. You don't even have a floor auditor. There is a problem with affinity groups. An affinity group is a group of people, similar girls, that work together. Eighty percent of the people working in the vote center are of leftist ideology, even though they put NP on their label. Yeah. And there are no serious consequences for voter fraud. I mean, you just slap on the wrist, "Ah, well, something just happened, you know." It's like Mr. Woodley, I guess, you know? You heard about him? Well, of course, the city Reno really slapped him hard, but, you know, the school board doesn't think it's a big deal. You know, 22,000 sexting messages on his phone over a seven-year period? It's amazing. So if there's no serious consequences, then people don't have any fear. So you've got to break up the affinity groups. And, you know, I, you know, what Mr. Rebar said was actually true. You were part of the executive branch. It'd be like the governor saying to a senator, "I want you to vote a certain way." Isn't that right? It's true. So this whole thing about ministerial duty is a lie. You know, you have these attorneys, and they, one minute they say one thing, you can vote your conscience, then along the way, they change it entirely. Why? Because they're not judges. There's no court, you know, precedent on this, right? So you can't say, "No, no, there's too many problems," and that's what we, the people, are saying. There's so many problems, and you've heard it today, all the problems. We have no confidence in this whole thing. It's a Democrat-run operation, and the Democrat Party is a organized crime syndicate. And we had a flood of these people from around the country come here, funded by the $1 billion Harris campaign, to turn our election, and they did a pretty good job. They did. And none of you people think they did fraud? Well, I guess we'll find out. It's federal law.
Thank you.
Sorry, Val White, followed by Fred Meyer. I have documents to distribute.
Mr. Nellis just referenced the lottery expert and medical records kind of expert. He owns companies, pharma companies. This is his report, his analysis, after viewing the register of voters, elections, ballot processing situation, and it's extensive. And he pretty much said what Mr. Nellis said and more. So it would really be a great idea if you looked through that and looked at it carefully, considered where the weaknesses are, because these are experts, as well as the expert that spoke earlier. These are experts nailed specifically to security in situations like elections. He did tell me in a conversation that this election processing, the way we do it in Washoe, would be considered a joke in any other industry. He said the Mexican Lottery is more secure than this one. And again, many hours in the ROV observing, and I know, I know that the ROV employees worked long and hard days and hours. It was a Herculean task, and it was not easy for them. You could tell by the end, just like myself, that everyone was exhausted. So I commend them for that. I know it was difficult. But what is going on there are processes that are archaic, basically, and they have not been updated. We need to rebuild that whole thing, all the processes, from the ground up, using expert analysis, like we've heard from today. I also understand that most of the employees in our department... I also understand that most of the employees in our department likely have very little responsibility for what many of us here see as issues serious enough for us to urge you not to certify this election. They're just doing a job. I understand that. But somewhere in this system, there is fraud. The numbers just don't make sense. They don't make sense. So I believe that we have bad actors remotely accessing our election system, as well as some local bad actors. Bad money coming in, money turns people's better judgment. There is evidence of digital intrusions into our election system, as you heard from a previous speaker. Simply, the entire trust issue comes down to the use of computerized processes. No human can see with their eyes that the data, tabulated and published, is accurate. The entire universe of problems between Republicans and Democrats and everyone else who has something to say about the elections could be solved by cleaning up the voter rolls, requiring proof of citizenship, voter ID, and hand-counting ballots at the precinct level. Until this is done, we will continue to be at odds with each other, and it is within your power to stop this discord. Move us to paper ballots, as I suggest.
Thank you.
Fred Meyer, followed by Cheryl Perino.
Good afternoon again. Let's prop our heads up for a little while longer, right? First off, what would it take for you to vote, to vote to not certify here today? I'm confused, Mr. Edwards and everybody else, is to, like somebody else already said, why are we here? I mean, I understand why you guys are here, but why are we here? Why do we get this little microphone right here and come up and talk about this subject at all? We should be cut off from, really, we should be, because it does not matter what we say. You all, well, I want to say everyone doesn't care, but most here don't care at all what we have to say about this subject, right, Nate? I mean, it's already a done deal. It's like perfunctory, I guess is the word, or something like that. It just, it's annoying, and I don't understand it. You're just doing this to frustrate us? That's what it feels like, because we don't get any feedback, nothing, you know, just, oh, we're going to do it. Okay, you're going to do it. We appreciate Mike Clark. We appreciate his position on this, and, you know, and him voting or not voting his conscience, I guess is what you might say. Washoe County, everybody, is known, and I think you probably all know this, it is one of the most corrupt counties in the nation, in the nation. That says a lot when you start thinking about places like Chicago and all these, you know, towns with a lot more people and a lot more historical corruption. We've got, we are the most corrupt. I guess I've heard more than Vegas? I don't know, but this is what I've heard, and I think others have heard it too. And all this, to me, screams of same-day voting, paper ballots, make it a federal holiday. Then we have no excuses. Everybody gets the day off. Federal holiday, doesn't that make sense? And then we all get to vote, everybody, you know, or even, I guess it could be two days, you know, but federal, make it a federal holiday kind of a thing. It would get rid of this. We've got way too much technology. Now we're asking, and by the way, these election workers over here, bravo to the volunteers and to the ones who are paid. I guess, bravo, you did the job you were paid to do. Okay, great, you know, you were paid to do it. That's, and, you know, I don't know what more to say about that, except you can cash your check at the end of the week. There's too much technology involved in all this. That's the problem. That's why we need to get back to paper ballots, because you guys have to sit here and listen to all this weirdness and all this, you know, stuff that gets interjected, and it's problematic for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Perino, followed by Janet Butcher.
Like to have this go on record. Okay, one commissioner said to the other, oh, he stormed out. I'd like to say, he didn't storm out, he walked out with integrity. And what I would say is, the storm is upon us, and we, the people, have had enough. We are going to take back our republic and our country. And to hide behind, I have to vote to certify it. It's my duty legally, then you shouldn't have the position. If I was here today and you were on The Apprentice Show, I'd say, all you responsible for this corruption and trying to validate a fraudulent election, you're fired. I hope you get this, even what I'm talking about. The Apprentice Show, Trump, you're fired. Okay, so, questions? Why does Washoe County take so long to count the vote, over one and a half weeks? That's interesting. That would tell me right away, as a prior auditor and CPA, you have big problems, and they've been disclosed to you, and you do nothing. Fired. Why does a ballot say, received, but not counted? But as soon as you certify that election, everyone that was received is counted. How miraculous. Were you just holding them in a little stockpile? Are really, were the votes counted? That's also suspicious, and I would suspect could be fraudulent. Why does the register's office, all the staff, people in charge, not follow the law? You were told about voters that should be deleted, and they weren't, on time. You're fired. We, the people, will not stand for this incompetence and corruption.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Bruce Foster.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments verbatim. Too bad I have to say that, but, so, there is truly a law that mandates a yes vote on the canvassing, even though things have been sent to the Secretary of State, affidavits showing that there are issues. So I am going to assume that nobody on this board bothered to check with the Secretary of State to see what has been set forth. So if this law says that you must vote yes, that's almost like having a law that tells a jury, you must convict, no matter what the evidence is. So somebody said, well, they found out that our votes will be showing after today that they were counted. So why are we having this canvassing now? Why aren't we not having this canvassing after all of the votes are being shown that they have or have not been counted? I don't feel comfortable. I don't think my vote is counted. It doesn't say it was. Also, I think earlier, protect the vote, people got up and said they were nonpartisan. And somebody informed me that they were indeed, they are indeed partisan. And also, this could be a rumor, I don't know, but it's my, the rumor I heard was that the person that is now in running the ROV actually worked for Dominion once upon a time. So, thank you.
Bruce Foster.
Hello, once again, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster, for the record. And I am a resident of Spanish Springs. My county commissioner in District 4 is Commissioner Andriola. And understanding that she could be the deciding vote here, and whether to certify or not certify. My concern here is that back in the primary, is that I think we all received this flyer. Clara Andriola endorses President Donald Trump for our families, for our future, for America. I really question that sincerity based upon what I heard with her testimony today in regarding standing behind the law and regarding certifying this election. And as we've just heard, there are issues. And we would like, we, the people, want to dig and take a deep dive into all these issues, if we can, please, a forensic audit. But I wish to put a question out to everyone. If the tables were turned right now, based upon what we've heard, would Donald, our President-elect, Donald J. Trump, would she endorse County Commissioner Clara Andriola? Think about that. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you very much. And now I look back to the board to see if there's any other comments or questions. I'm not seeing any. And Commissioner Garcia, you said you had a motion ready. Are you still on the phone?
Yes, Commissioner Hill. I move to approve the Declaration of Canvas of 2024 General Election in Order.
Thank you very much. I will second that. Any questions or comments on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. And that motion passes, three to one, with Vice Chair Herman in the no vote. We will now move to item six. Please, we are now moving on to item six. This is our public comment. Mr. Solero.
Item number six is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole. Again, a speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during a meeting.
If people can please, I'm sorry, Mr. Solero, if people can please quiet down. If you would like to have conversations, please do it out in the hallway while you're leaving. You can continue on.
Thank you. The presiding officer may order a person to be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to the removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of public meetings are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commentators?
We do. First up, we have Drew Rebar, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Again, while folks are leaving, if you have side conversations, please do it in the hallway.
Hi again, Drew Rebar, for the record. Well, that's over now. As I said, I'm going to be running for office again in a couple more years. I haven't given up on that. But my plan for this next legislative session is to lobby, and one of the things I'm going to lobby for changes in our election laws. I recognize that our county commissions don't have control over that, but our legislators do. So hopefully, we can make some good changes at this next legislative session to simplify our election process and bring transparency and accountability to it. Currently, our government employees don't really have any accountability. If you do something naughty, generally, well, you get paid to go on a vacation. That seems to be my impression over my lifetime. So hopefully, we can change that and make some government accountability come into play here. Most government employees, you don't even know the Constitution. Just the other day, I was down at the library, I was trying to find out about a man that had his rights restricted, and I'd been trespassed from library property. I can't even go ask librarians a question or go do public records requests anymore at the libraries. I'd been trespassed. I had three sheriff's deputies surrounding me. It was kind of cool. There's a video out there if you want to see it. Anyways, I think that's all that I've really got to say. So I appreciate Jeannie. Thank you for voting no. Great respect to Mr. Clark. And the other three of you that voted yes on this very questionable election. As I said, I believe the executive branch of our government has put a gun to your head, and they're going to pull the trigger if you don't vote the way that they tell you to vote. So much for free speech in the state of Nevada isn't a vote speech. Chris Hicks, Aaron Ford, they all threatened you with arrest and prosecution, right? At least, that's what Jeannie told me, or Commissioner Clark told me. So I really can't blame you for voting yes to certify this very questionable election. I'm not saying that bad things happen, I'm just saying there's a lot to be questioned. And we, the people, we shouldn't have to question the integrity of our elections, and that's the problem that Washoe County has created under the regime of County Manager Brown. I hope you guys recognize that. He's the one that's really causing you to sit here and listen to all of this. You guys can fire him. That is in your authority. Have a nice day. Please keep my comments on the record. Drew Rebar.
Victoria Meyer, followed by Pam Dar.
Victoria Meyer. Oh, that was fun. Fun exercise of ministerial duties. Ministerial duty is of relating to a minister of religion or a minister's office, that which is done under the authority of a superior opposed to judicial. A ministerial act is defined as of the nature of those acts or duties belonging to the administration function, of the executive function, excuse me. It's an executive, it's a ministering duty of the executive branch of government. It's not for a lawmaking body, but, you know, maybe NRS statute says you have to do it, maybe it doesn't. We could debate that a lot. But you guys need to grow some. I think this county is corrupt. I think it is one of the most corrupt counties. I've lived here a long time. It was founded by a bunch of gangsters, so shouldn't be too surprised by that. I don't have a whole lot to say. I kind of want to talk about election interference. You have a petition maybe that's coming before you regarding WC1, which the people spoke loudly on and said no. Probably because of all the publicity, a lot of it lies about violent people protesting at the drag queen story hours and the books and that kind of thing. I would be one of those people. We have everything on video. In fact, caught the librarian's lying. I don't know if you saw Mr. Rebar's amusing video of the lying, crying librarian, but she was caught in a cold lie about those events. So the people, all the publicity, good or bad, the people saw that. And the people understand, from all the work that's been done, what's going on in this county regarding books and drag queens and other things that the library has been doing. It's stacked with people of one persuasion on the left, pretty much stacked. A lot of controversy. There wasn't any controversy when schools were about reading, writing, and arithmetic, and libraries were a place to go and learn about history and read good literature, but it's become controversial. The election interference would be a petition telling you guys to keep spending that library board money, when the people said no. The people don't like what's been going on, and the people have spoken. So I'm not sure when they're going to bring that forward, but apparently there is more shenanigans. So just remember, election integrity. Remember that, okay? Integrity of elections. You guys want to talk about the voice of the people is heard, well, we spoke.
Pam Dar, followed by Breanna Veratausky.
Hello, Chair, fellow commissioners. I'm sorry, I don't feel well today. I was going to leave after my first comment, so I just have a headache. Must be the change of weather. But I stayed because I didn't have time to thank everybody. Working the elections, that hotline call center was amazing. Our support team at the ROV that helped us get through the crowds, I just want to do a shout-out and say thank you. They worked hard, we worked hard. I had a team, they're my phone, is the A-team, my staff that worked with me. They were great. That being said, I got to move on to a totally different subject. I come home to find out I'm being special assessed. I'm freaking out. My husband and I moved into that community with retaining walls and a fire road, and that's all we want. And all of a sudden, we're getting special assessment for 250 bucks. And the board's adding little things, which is different little thing, but it's like panic, because I came from a community with a lot of amenities, which we didn't use and don't want to be paying for. We don't want them. So I reached out to the Reserve Analysis Group that did this, you know, assessment, what we need. She was very helpful, very nice. She likes to help people, which is kind of nice to have. And she works for the Better Reserve Consultants. She told me more than my own management company that we pay for, or the board. But I guess this is being forced upon us through the county, because we have open land with sagebrush. It would have been nice to have known this, like a week ago, before my blood pressure went up. I guess maybe I missed the memo because I was busy working the elections, I don't know, or because not getting into the Zoom meetings because of the corroded links they sent me with the agenda. I did get a name from your county employee who I can call, but I just wonder how I missed that. I try to watch the cab meetings, I try to watch the meetings here, but I guess that's something in fuel protection. My husband and I always made sure we had plenty of room, 10 feet away from our, at the time, we had a wood fence. Now we have wrought iron. And I've been there since 2009. Yes, there is sagebrush, and I do see the need for that, but I don't even know where that price came from. I don't know, I don't know anything. So I'll be busy researching this, but we got no communication on that, and I guess it's through the county. And it would have helped me if I would have known. I missed the memo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brianna Ferretowski, followed by Penny Brock.
The media production specialist verified to me in a September email that the tabulation room, which contains ballot processing servers, workstations, and equipment, and where all polling-location USBs are taken for tabulation, is not monitored with security camera surveillance. I made a formal request to the county in September to allow a live-stream camera in that room, and that request was denied. I think it's very important to ensure the tabulation room is monitored by security surveillance. Installing a live-stream camera in that room during election time would allow for meaningful observation, as noted in the Nevada Administrative Code. Can we please have cameras in that room? Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Janet Butcher.
Penny Brock, for the record. Today, I'm sad for Washoe County, but I'm excited for our nation. We now have a president named Donald J. Trump, who's putting quickly together his new administration and has promised many things for America, that will restore our country. At the candidate forum at the library between Chair Hill and Marsha Burke Bigler, Chair Hill informed the audience that Washoe County, every resident in Washoe County needs a mommy. And Washoe County is going to be the mommy for the residents of Washoe County. Well, guess what, Chair Hill? America elected a daddy. Daddy's home. Our problem in Washoe County is we have a mommy. Well, we don't want a mommy. We want someone like our daddy now. So we're excited. We will see how the mommy versus the daddy works out in Washoe County.
Janet Butcher.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. I really want to thank Commissioner Herman for having the integrity to actually stand against verifying and saying yes to an election that obviously needs to be reviewed before it is canvassed. I would have to say, my grandfather, great-great-great-grandfather, who escaped tyranny from Prussia and fought with George Washington, would probably be very proud to know you, Commissioner Herman. The only time that, I find it interesting that, you know, like we talk about all the time about, we have to have the police here, police presence, sheriff, whatever. And like Victoria brought up about the lies about, that we're being told about, the people who were standing up for the protection of the children, which we know that there are several commissioners who really don't care about the children. That the only time that I have felt threatened was a while back, when the election integrity resolution was deliberately postponed until large groups of activists could be brought in here. And I was actually yelled at and chest-bumped by one of the activists that came in to object to our county, when they weren't even from our county, having, listening to the resolution. We all know why Commissioner Herman's resolution isn't set forth. Because it is important that we keep, not to me, by any means, but is important by those in charge, is important to them to keep the corruption going, to keep the elections not of integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to item seven, Mr. Solero.
Item number seven is Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates. Requests for Information are topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything?
I just have one item. I just really wanted to, again, reiterate the thanks for our staff that spent a lot of time and effort putting together a really good election here in Washoe County. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Herman.
So I want to thank all the folks that came here today to speak in favor of America. And I just am grateful that you keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned.